Thank you, Charlotte. We're gonna have you up there as the timekeeper. Come on, let's go. All right. So I think we have everybody here seated. And I will see if somebody could just pull the doors at the back. That would be wonderful. Thank you. All right. So we're gonna start off with our audiovisual recording webcasting message as per Policy 1204 of the Board. The regular meeting of the Board of Education will be recorded and may be streamed live, archived, and accessed online. The Board also reserves the right to edit or by motion of the Board at any meeting choose to not stream live or archive a meeting or portion thereof. So with that being said, I will call the meeting to order at 7:02 PM. And I would like to start by acknowledging that the Langley School District is located on the traditional lands of the Kwantlin, Kasee, Matasque, and Semiamu First Nations. And with that, just before we start our introductions, I'd also like to acknowledge that we will not be here on National Indigenous Peoples' Day, which falls on June 21st. So I'd like to take this moment, just acknowledge that National Indigenous Peoples' Day is an important day to recognize and celebrate the cultures and contributions of the First Nations, Inuit, and Métis Indigenous Peoples of Canada, and a chance for us to come together in the spirit of reconciliation. Later on in the agenda, we will be receiving our annual June update on truth and reconciliation and Aboriginal education, but I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge this important date coming up. So with that, we are now on to our report from... Oh, no, we have to do our introductions first, sorry. So with that, on my far right, we have trustee Tony Ward. And then we also, with regrets, trustee Perot this evening is not feeling well, so she's unable to join us, so we send her well wishes. And we have vice chair Coburn. To far left, we have trustee Marnie Wilson, trustee Rod Ross, trustee David Todd. And to my immediate right, we have superintendent Gord Stewart, our secretary treasurer Brian Isley, our assistant secretary treasurer Shin Chan, assistant superintendent Woody Bradford, assistant superintendent Mel Gill, assistant superintendent Barry Bunyan. We have our executive assistant Lori Mason, our communications manager Joanne Emscher, and our IT technical support Dale Vo. And joining us from our partner groups tonight, we have from QP 1260, Charlotte Major. And we have a representative who... 1260 also, and I'm so sorry.
Raylene Shalock.
Raylene Shalock. Welcome again. Thank you. And we have Wendy Cook from the LTA, Tanya Carr from the LTA. DPAC's unable to join us tonight. And we have from the Langley Principals and Vice Principals Association, we have John Pusek. And welcome. And thank you, everybody, for joining us on our last meeting of the year. So our next item now, for real, is our report from in camera, vice chair Coburn.
In camera, we discuss personnel illegal.
And we now need a motion for our consent agenda. Could I get a mover, please? Moved by trustee Todd, seconded by trustee Ross. Any comments or questions? All those in favor of adopting a consent agenda? It's carried. Next item is... Yes, we are moving on to our... Sorry, it's a long consent agenda. Consideration of the agenda. Could I please get a mover for the agenda? Moved by trustee Todd, seconded by trustee Ross. Any additions, changes of order in the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the agenda as presented, it's carried. And we are now on to the secretary treasurer's report, 7.1, please. Superintendent... Or secretary treasurer, sorry. You tell us June. Sorry.
I don't mind. Gord can do it.
It's been a long school year.
Okay, Gord can't do it.
I don't even know where I am.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Wanted to provide a quick overview of our... We presented in detail at the May 28th meeting the status of the budget for the next coming school year. We had did the first and second readings of the budget, and tonight would need the third reading to pass that, as we need to submit our budget to the ministry by the end of June. Just for people to recall, the bylaw amount is for all of our different funds, the main operating fund, the special purpose fund, and our capital fund. Our total bylaw amount is $251,934,582,000. For the operating portion, you can see that our revenues have gone up just under $7 million, and our expenses just under... just over $6.6 million. That leaves us in a deficit position of just under $2.2 million. That is a planned deficit that we are using to draw down our accumulated surpluses from prior years. You can see that that is down from the amended budget of this current school year of $3.2 million. This slide here shows you where some of those surpluses sit at the end of... plan to be at the end of June, and the appropriation and what would leave us with our surpluses at the end of June of 2020. The first is the internally restricted Board policy controlled surplus. That is one that the Board controls and has rules around what it can be used for and how it is to be replenished over the two subsequent budget cycles. We have... still have $1.15 million in infrastructure placement and $0.5 million for portables. We still have the $1.6 million to deal with the space issues at LSS and LEC. We would have still some funds for admin development of $125,000. We would be using the remainder of the $450,000 for our tech knowledge plan. And we would still have the district to support schools of $150,000. And then the last amount is the school bank accounts that we don't actually touch, but have to include as our consolidation of our numbers for $3.1 million. That leaves just over $10 million in items that the Board has restricted, and would leave $780,000 left that is unrestricted that could then be used in subsequent periods to balance budgets going forward. That being said, the Board needs a couple motions tonight. The first would be to appropriate the $1,734,978 to be used to balance the budget for the 1920 school year, as well as a motion to unrestrict the $450,000 from the tech plan to get us to a balanced budget with those two items. And then the third reading of our bylaw amount. So with that, I'll hand it over to our chair.
Okay. Thank you. The first question, I believe, is from trustee Todd.
Not so much a question. I believe we've gone over most of these figures and everything. Just the rationale is that we are spending money where it is needed, and it is using surplus accrued funds, and we're spending it this year in a planned manner to improve educational outcomes in our district. So just wanted to make that clear to people. And I'm not sure if you have other people on the speakers list yet?
Trustee Ross.
Yes, and thank you. The question I have for the secretary treasurer is my typical question, so forgive me for being so consistent. Thank you. But the question really has to do with, you know, there's always... the landscape is always changing. And so from month to month, stuff happens. So I think it's important for the public to know what keeps you awake at night? What are you... what's a concern for you that doesn't show up in the numbers on that screen, on those last couple of screens?
I think the biggest one is the uncertainty on the funding. Coming forward, this district lost funding this year in the way they've changed how they allocated the teacher and QP contract amounts to districts. And we're in the process of a funding review, which always brings uncertainty, whether that's good or bad. We'll wait to see, but the uncertainty is what concerns me.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So thank you for not asking the book question. And trustee Ross was unsure. All right. So I do not have any other speakers on the list right now. So we will then move through our three motions order. So the first motion is that the Board of Education directs staff to appropriate $1,734,978 of unrestricted surplus to balance the operating fund for 2019-2020. Moved by trustee Todd, seconded by vice chair Coburn. Any comments or questions on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Motion is carried. The second motion is that the Board of Education approves staff to appropriate, unrestrict, the following restricted surplus amounts to balance the operating fund for 2018-2019, and that is for $450,000, district initiative to support technology. Moved by trustee Ross, seconded by trustee Wilson. Any comments or questions on that? Trustee Ross? Oh, sorry. On the agenda, I thought. I'm so sorry. Okay. As you can see, we are now projecting the motions on the screen, which is great. Mine on my end says 2018-2019, and I just read it without thinking, what year are we in? Reread it so everybody is sure that it's the right one. So it said the Board of Education approves staff to appropriate, unrestrict, the following restricted surplus amounts to balance the operating fund for 2019-2020, and that is for $450,000, a district initiative to support technology. Trustee Ross, you're still okay to move it? Trustee Wilson is okay to second it still? So given that, any other comments or questions on that motion? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you, trustee Ross, for picking that up. The third one is that the school district number 35 Langley, 2019-2020, annual budget bylaw in the amount of $251,934,582 be given third reading, passed and adopted on this, the 18th day of June 2019. Could I please get a mover? Moved by trustee Ross, seconded by trustee Todd. Any comments or questions on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? The motion is carried. So that concludes the annual budget bylaw, third and final reading, and the subsequent motions that go with it. So we're now on to 7.1.2, five-year capital plan 2020-2021.
Thank you. So at the last Finance and Facilities meeting, we went through in detail the proposal for the five-year capital plan. So I will go through the highlights of that in incredible detail, but it's all in your package. Just a reminder that school districts are required by every... June 30th every year to submit an updated five-year capital plan. And that capital plan is done in this fiscal year, but represents the ministry's financial year of 2020-21. So that's would be the cycle where they would be approving the funds for this capital plan. The capital plan covers all the capital programs, and I have a list of those for you. The capital plan must be in line with the long-term facilities plan, which this district updated, I believe, in November of 2017. And there needs to be a resolution of the Board for it, and as mentioned, it has to be submitted by the end of June. These are the items that are covered in the capital plan. They're broken into two types of categories. Ones that are called annual capital programs. These are ones that the ministry considered one-stage approval processes. So they would, in our capital plan, say which of these they approve, and they expect us to execute them in that year of the 2021. And there's only one decision point for those. They give us the funds to implement. The major capital programs are a two-stage process, and they're usually multi-year projects. So these would be school additions and expansions and those sort of things. When they do respond in their capital plan letter, there would be a request for a project definition report so that there would be more information coming on that. More on the capital response. Mentioned that they would be split between the first and second stages for the approval. They still have a requirement still of boards required to contribute to major projects. All school additions, new school sites, even seismic projects, if they're not the lowest cost alternative, require a contribution. Those contributions are based on what the ministry and Treasury Board determine that a district is able to pay. That it doesn't weigh into whether or not the projects are approved or not. The approval happens first, and then the discussion on contributions happen after the fact. So that doesn't impact whether or not they happen or not. Sorry for the messiness of this slide, but trying to show all the items that were approved are part of the capital plan. And on one slide in the timelines, it's difficult. I just wanted to point out, as we mentioned at the Finance and Facilities, the ministry has changed the way they allow districts to prioritize their projects. In the past, they would ask us to prioritize all projects, except for the one, the annual projects. They no longer give us that ability. So you... the first column there, the district has highlighted its first three priorities. And then they are in category order, so you can see there's a lot of number-one priorities based on the way that we are now asked to submit the capital plan. So the first priority for the district would be a secondary site up in the Smith neighborhood. And that is the biggest priority, not necessarily because of impending space requirements as we're in a new high school. It's more that the places that we could fit a high school on the Willoughby slope are disappearing at a very rapid pace. So we are concerned about being able to find a site large enough that would accommodate what we see as our second high school up on the Willoughby slope. When we did the long-term plan, there's a need for two secondary sites and four middle. And right now, we would have at this September, we would have one secondary and two middle. The second priority is the build-out of an elementary site on northeast Latimer. It's a piece of property that we own as a district. We'd like to see that being built out. And then the third would once again be another site acquisition for a third middle school in the Smith region. Same reason, and as in the secondary site, as we start to see the larger pieces of land disappear, the priority to get those procured as soon as possible. So with that, I will leave that over to questions, and I'll turn it over to you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Don't have any man speakers list. Is there anybody who would like questions before we get a motion on the floor? So trustee Ross.
Yeah, if I could just get some clarification. So in the past, whenever we asked for money for a site, that was separate. But you've got $52 million for a 17-acre site. Now, is that the site only for 52 million? Is that what property costs up in that area now? It's like, that's not... it's like two... is it 3 million?
Property is pushing close to 3 million in parts of the Willoughby area. Anywhere from 2 and up to 3 million.
Okay. Sorry. So this is site only?
Yeah, that is the only site.
Trustee Todd.
Yeah, I like to use the term, we can talk about financing facilities. You talked about years three and four, the five-year capital plan, as being notional, almost like placeholders. Can you explain a little bit around that, the notionality of those?
What they require of us when we do the capital plan is the things that are specified in year one and two are feasible and that the costing is realistic, that so if they did approve it, that it would be executable and for a similar price and similar timeline. The things out in year... more specifically, year four and five are just things to highlight for the ministry that are on the horizon. They're the ones that are probably not as accurate when it comes to costing and timing. You know, when you're trying to predict the cost of a piece of property five years down the road, it's pretty hard to do. And even the cost of building a school that far down the road is hard. It's more to give the ministry an idea of what they... we see coming as a need in those more farther out years.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any further speakers. Just before I get a mover for the motion, I just wanted to reiterate, I know I do each five-year capital plan. It's quite concerning, the requirements and the expectation that school districts will be contributing significant amounts of funding into new builds. School districts are not private corporations. We don't have the ability to go out and reasonably generate funds. And it's concerning when, you know, what's characterized as surplus land is asked to be dispensed with, and then you continue on, and eventually that money's gone. It's one-time money. And so as we are building as quickly as we can, we're depleting those funds that we once had. And I think as a Board, we need to continue to shine a spotlight on the fact that we are going to continue to need more schools. And we just cannot generate more funds if the expectation is that we're putting in multi-millions of dollars in order to have a new school built. So I just feel it's important for us as a Board that we continue to shine a light on the fact that that is an expectation that doesn't seem to be going away anytime soon. But it's the trustee Ross's hand to up, so just before we move that motion.
Yeah, if I could just clarify for everyone and for myself. So we submit this the end of June. When do we hear back? What's the general... like, things are always changing. So how fast are we going to hear back from the ministry on this?
The timeline they project is March.
Okay, so seeing no further speakers, the recommended motion is, in accordance with provisions under section 142.4 of the School Act, the Board of Education of School District Number 35 Langley approves the proposed five-year capital plan 2020-2021 as provided on the attached five-year capital summary, which we have moved by trustee Ross, seconded by trustee Todd. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. All right. We are rolling through these. We now have item 7.1.3. Over to you, secretary treasurer.
So this is one that we've brought to the Audit Committee this month on increasing our credit facilities for our P-card program. We, a number of years back, moved more to a P-card process for some of our smaller-type purchases to reduce the paperwork and administrative burden of those smaller purchases. And that has grown as the district has grown, and as that initiative has grown. Currently, the limit is $1 million, and there are times in the year where we butt up against that, usually in September and in May and June for the startups and the closing of the school year, which has caused a few issues. And purchasing is looking to add a couple initiatives, which would make that even more difficult, going to what they call budget P-cards, where you can set a limit that can give into an individual. It's not like a prepaid card. It doesn't have money on it, but once you've charged up to that preset limit, they have to get approval before they can spend any farther. We're also looking at doing what they call ghost cards for some of our vendors that we do continual purchases, like staples and some of the janitorial stuff, where you're doing lots of high-volume small purchases. The benefit to the district is that we don't have the processing fees, but we also get a rebate that comes back from the credit card company, which has been growing year over year and is now at $60,000 a year that we receive now, that we... for buying the same things that we would have in the past. So when we have talked with the P-card company, they recommended for an organization this size, a credit limit of $5 million. That was brought to the Audit Committee, and they have recommended that being brought to you tonight.
Okay, thank you, secretary treasurer. So we do have three motions. So what I'll do is we'll start at trustee Ross with just getting the first motion on the floor, so that we're there. So the recommendation is that the school district number 35 Langley Bank of Montreal Mastercard Facility Credit Limit Increase Bylaw Number 2019 be given first reading. A mover moved by trustee Ross, seconded by vice chair Coburn. Trustee Ross, you got a question or comment?
Yeah, and just to clarify, so a P-card means purchasing card, and so a good chunk of our teachers and staff have them. And so it's not like people are running this up to 5 million now. They all have limits on their cars, and once it's... they've reached their limit of $1,000 or $2,000, then it stops. What this does is it gives the district flexibility in making sure that their needs are taken care of. So I applaud the district. I think this is a wise move, and I think we should just all vote in favor of this. Thank you.
All right. Trustee Todd and trustee Rock.
Thank you. I think it's using smart money, yes. My question is always around the financial jurisprudence or prudence in this. And what was that long word that we all struggled with when we did our swearing? Fiduciary. And my concern is just, like, I don't know, how do auditors or people in the financial industry, how would they deem this? It's considered responsible and fiduciary to use these instruments?
Yeah, absolutely. And like I said, the bank, looking at an organization of this size, figures that a $5 million limit would be reasonable. Not that we would use it, but it's there, especially as we start adding... like, we can look at even adding our gas bills. So they're bills that we pay anyways, but we might as well get a rebate on them. So there is some benefit to us to being able to put more items on these cards, because it does provide us that rebate that we wouldn't have received otherwise.
All right. Trustee Todd, then trustee Ross has a follow-up after.
Just a follow-up. It's not air miles, or there's no rewards. It's actually just cash rebate.
Yeah, there's no rewards to any of the cardholders. It is just a cash rebate that the district receives as a check.
Trustee Ross.
So what I just wanted to put into context for the public that are watching this in TV land, wherever they might be. There's a few back there, so thank you for coming. But essentially, what this does is it saves the district lots of time. In the old days, before we had purchasing cards, you know, people would have to submit, and then we'd have to write a check out to every person's request. And, you know, writing checks for $100 or $75 or $16 or whatever the small amounts are. So this is absolutely a prudent way to manage your finances. And the school district, and through the wise use of our finance team, I have no concerns about them making sure that the controls are there. Thank you.
Wonderful. I don't have any further speakers on the list, so trustee Ward, you're looking like you may have a question again. All right. Okay, so we have a mover, and we have a secondor. So all those in favor of the motion being given first reading? Okay, so now we're on to the second motion, which is that the school district number 35 Langley Bank of Montreal Mastercard Facility Credit Limit Increase Bylaw Number 2019 be given second reading. Could I please get a mover? Moved by trustee Ward, seconded by trustee Wilson. Any comments or questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? The next motion requires it to be unanimous, and that is that the Board of Education of School District Number 35 Langley approves having all three readings of the Bank of Montreal Mastercard Facility Credit Limit Increase Bylaw Number 2019 at tonight's meeting. Could I please get a mover? Moved by trustee Ross, seconded by trustee Todd. Any comments or questions on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Are you opposed? Oh, okay. All right, let's do that again. One more time. One more time, in case somebody comes back later and watches tapes and be like, trustee Wilson is off there holding her hand back. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried unanimously. So we're gonna have our third reading now. Could I please get a mover that the school district number 35 Langley Bank of Montreal Mastercard Facility Credit Limit Increase Bylaw Number 2019 be given third reading, passed and adopted on this, the 18th day of June 2019? Could I please get a mover? Moved by trustee Ward, seconded by vice chair Coburn. Any other questions or comments on this? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. All right. Well, that was exciting. Thank you, trustee Wilson. We're on to the superintendent's report, 8.1, Framework for Enhancing Student Learning. Over to you, superintendent.
Thank you. And I'll do a little bit of a preface to start, and then I have a team here that's going to present some real highlights that we've had over the course of the year. The Framework for Enhancing Student Learning is a ministry requirement, and the expectation that we have a document that can capture what we're doing to improve student learning. And we post that on our website. It is under our district. And if you go under that tab, you'll go to Langley Learns, and it'll have FESL. And you go on there, and you'll be able to access the website to see what our plans are around that. And we're... And we're making a change, so I'm going to talk a little bit in terms of the platform we're using and why we're going to make that change there, and then I'm going to call on the team to come on up and present some absolutely phenomenal stuff that's happened this year, which will be a great way to kind of end the school year. So I want to start out by thanking Anthony here, Tony Biondi, and Joe Abshire, who have been extensively involved in working through this process. And if you would, if you go on the website right now, you will not see this version. What we've had it is in a prezi format, and while creative, it can be frustrating. It can be frustrating as you have to kind of continue to kind of tab forward in terms of getting sometimes the site you'd like to get to. I do like the creative aspects of it in terms, we're trying to find something that our community could draw them in, and it's certainly very creative. We have to make sure that it's in a language that our community can understand in terms of not edgy speak, but can kind of look at it, okay, what are the school goals, and what are the examples they're giving? That program does that, but again, that prezi form, we thought, we've got to find a different way of doing this. This is a mock-up, this is something that the team will continue to work on as we move towards the fall, but we really felt that we didn't want to lose those best aspects. So again, if you go on the current one, you have a nice piece where we have a number of students that speak in terms of our journey, in terms of our vision and mission, which we worked at as a community and did a real nice job, and also the acknowledgement of our Aboriginal community. That part will stay, it'll go under our story, and you'll be able to still capture that. We thought if you went to something in terms of a tab approach, that it'll allow people to go directly to something they may be just interested in that one area. I just want to know about literacy, I just want to know about numeracy, I just want to know about this outdoor ed thing, that you could do that, and you'd be able to do that under any of those four bars. What we hope to also be able to do there is have a translate feature, so that again, depending on what is your language, that you'd be able to utilize that. And we also, we're going to try to make sure we have a search bar function, you can just type the word in, and it'll lie, it quickly acts, so try to make it easier. If people are going to take the time to look, how can we kind of get them there? So upon going on there, onto the site, and if they hit a drop-down bar, the next piece is then we start to roll them through in terms of what are some of the strategies we're utilizing around this particular goal? What are the goals we're after? And then also in terms of, you'd have here some data in terms of, we have the Spanish version right now, because when you're working on it, that's the only thing that kicks up in terms of language, so don't worry, we will make sure this is in English also. But you'll have, again, you'll have a place that captures all the measurement piece going forward, and you'll have an opportunity to videos, you're going to have an opportunity in terms of the stories that, well, Joe's doing such a nice job right now of getting this out in terms of social media. What we ask our departments is when you hit any of those domains, again, might be something around mentorship, it could be something, again, around in terms of what we're doing around the literacy and numeracy piece, that you can get it on there right away and keep it kind of updated. The other people we tend to find is the community, they like to see their kids, so the more stuff you can put about their kids on there, it'll be a natural way to draw them in to take a look at the good work we're doing. So it is like an e-portfolio, it's our portfolio. It's something that we will utilize over the course of the year to capture all the good things that have taken place. So we will have more to show you in the fall, in terms as this gets finished up. And what we're really going to take the opportunity is right now, between the four team members, and you know what, I have to say that, you know, for me personally, superintendent, you're as strong as the people around you. And I'm very fortunate to be surrounded by a number of good people, and certainly, these four individuals are amongst them. I really do want to commend them for the great work they've done this year, certainly on the instructional side and supporting everybody out there. Amazing what's happening, and I watched this early, I feel very proud of the work that all four of you have done and have been part of. So I look forward to the presentation, White Morgan, Don Tomlinson, Woody Bradford, and Mel Gill. Thank you for the work that you do every day, and I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, that's superintendent Jordan. For the four of us, this is a lot of fun, this is a celebration of all the great work that's going on in our district, the work that our staff is doing in all of our schools to support our students, just the community field that we have in each of our buildings to really get behind initiatives that we're doing as a district, to really embrace our vision that we have in Langley of what we're trying to accomplish. And the inspiring piece tonight is just the stories that we're going to tell, and these stories can't be told without someone collecting this information constantly for us. So Joe and Anthony have done a fantastic job of being able to support us on this journey as we've captured this. And for us, in terms of our story tonight and sharing this with you, we're going to try and bring so many different snapshots to you about what's going on in our district. And the exciting thing is, is the graphic changes, it's all about growth. And in our district, as we see each and every day and each and every year, our framework becomes more and more vibrant in what it's doing to actually showcase the work that's going on in our schools. Our quadrants that we're working in are continually being populated, stories of students that are having success because we're being innovative in what we're trying to provide for them, and we're unified in the approaches that we're trying to do to accomplish their story to be inspiring for all those. So what really holds our framework up are our principles of learning, our Aboriginal principles of learning are the foundational pieces that we work through and we look through to ensure that our students are meeting, are having the opportunities to learn in an environment that they're going to be successful. And these principles are the foundational pieces for us to be successful within our classrooms, within our schools each and every day, and these need to come to life in our classrooms each day for our students to be successful, and our framework is driven through these principles to be successful. Guiding us along this journey is our curriculum, and the redesigned curriculum, we can call it redesigned, but it's our curriculum now that we live in, and the world is constantly changing, and the curriculum has been a response to that changing world, and it has allowed us to have a roadmap that really embraces the opportunity for kids to have a deep understanding application of their learning, still with a high focus on literacy and numeracy, but really student-centered and flexible in what we're trying to accomplish for our students to be successful, because we have to be able to have our system to respond to a changing world. As when we went to school, it was pretty predictable what jobs we were going to have when we came out of school. We know now with the changing world and the rapid pace of technology and the infrastructure that's outside of schools, that those jobs are continually changing, and our students are in a world that is fast-paced and accelerated, and we need to be able to adapt it, and our curriculum does that for us. So the first quadrant I want to talk about is just the opportunity to have a lifelong passion for learning, and how we ignite that lifelong passion for learning, and we do it through relevant, meaningful choices for students. So when you think about, when you think about the relevant, meaningful choices for students... They'll let the silence do the heavy lifting. It's really focusing on that opportunity for students to have those meaningful choices for themselves, relevant to their own life, like, how do we actually capture that along their way, their pathway throughout our schools, so that they recognize that learning doesn't just happen K to 12, it's a lifetime of experiences, and we want to be able to create those environments in our schools for our students to be able to have that. And really, it is about creating those opportunities. So when you think about choices for students, how do you create those choices for them to be engaged each and every day to really ignite that passion for learning that they have? Some examples of that within our schools right now, North Otter and Parkside, they used to be a box, this is a project that was brought to these two schools, creative staff coming in, thinking about the design process, to have students work collaboratively in partners, or collaboratively with their classmates, or connections with home, just the connection from home in terms of reusing, recycling cardboard boxes and making phenomenal things, and showcasing those in events, and really being proud to be able to talk to these experiences. Another thing we've seen is just the entrepreneur fairs that have gone throughout our district, and this all started with the Idea Summit, and just the idea that we could do things and promote and sell, and be able to come up with these ideas that are passionate to the students' own pathways, and be able to promote those, be able to sell those, that entrepreneur mindset of giving back, and also recognizing all the different components that go into being an entrepreneur. And these fairs now are across our district, so these are two examples, Coglan and H.G. Stafford, but these are happening in our schools throughout the year, just embracing that opportunity for the entrepreneurship within our schools for our students. And then some other examples, grade 10 science class in Poppy, at Poppy, where they are designing through simple machines, end of the physics unit, and they're celebrating that success through the design process. And then a collaborative design process between LSS and Douglas Park, where students from LSS are coming down into Douglas Park, creating stories with the students, creating teddy bears for the students, and really, that collaborative connection between the two schools, again, those meaningful, relevant experiences for the kids to really embrace going to school each and every day. The ownership in terms of what we want students to be able to have as they make these choices in schools, we want students to be connected to their learning, we want them to own their learning. And some examples of that, just the social-emotional learning piece, this is the focus program, going out into nature to just connect with nature, the self-regulation piece of being connected with nature, unplugging from the iPads, the iPhones, getting into nature and just connecting in a peaceful way to have their mind and body in a good place and a relaxed place to learn. Tonight, we've got a great example of fine arts and the power of fine arts. So Langley Fine Arts, in terms of their programming around the Radiohead, the re-performance of the Radiohead, Black Walk, fine arts here tonight, in terms of what was going on there, and then all our secondary schools and their performances. And then, of course, we have our outdoor program, and the outdoor program having lots of success. Here's an example, the shelters that are being made, and another, creating rock snowmen on Bray Island, so two experiences with the kids, and a great little video in terms of what's going on with these classes in the outdoor program. at our secondary schools, we saw again tonight Walnut Grove with their success around the track and field, basketball, Brookswood and Walnut Grove examples there, Alda Grove, the Little Dribblers, so going into our elementary schools now and promoting athletics there, ownership, success around wrestling at Poppy, and then obviously, our vision being the drive around athletics. And then finally, when you think about lifelong learning, we know that one of the key experiences is continually reflecting on what we do as lifelong learners, and two great examples for you, our Aboriginal achievement awards this year, just the power of this event, we had 388 students this year receive awards, the highest ever, 125 grads this year in our Aboriginal program, and 52 grads attended that, and over 500 guests were here. So a powerful experience and something that really reflects on the success we're having as lifelong learners within our district. through their elementary years into their middle years, tradition started from LSS, and now again, has a system of celebration around success for our graduates across our district.
We always get to see the outcome of the work that we do when kids are younger, but we know that it's a team effort, it requires everybody to help these kids be successful. So to have the opportunity to see them hit that huge pinnacle in their education and be a part of that celebration is so great for our staff and great for our kids to see. We want our kids to know that that's what's on their horizon and have them be excited about that.
It's very emotional, I'm always very proud of the fact that they have persevered and finished their school career. I get emotional and I do get teary when I see them, so it is wonderful to have them come back and be able to see how much they've changed.
So I have the privilege of talking a little bit about our quadrant around learners are knowledgeable, skilled and innovative, and we don't start necessarily with innovation with students, we really start with building their efficacy, their belief in themselves about their own skills and increasing their confidence, and we do that by intentionally designing, developing their skills through the work that we do around the core competencies and the curricular competencies, and designing learning experiences that are meaningful, that are relevant, and that they're authentic. And what you're going to see tonight, and what you've already seen, is a lot of the do part of the no-do-understand of the curriculum. That's a really important shift for us to remember. That do part is probably the most important shift that we can make in our teaching and learning. The word empowerment always comes to me when we talk about our learners, ultimately, we want to empower learners to own their learning, and Woody talked a little bit about that. That doesn't happen by a teacher standing in front of a room disseminating information. That happens when a teacher scaffolds the learning for the student through well-designed learning experiences. I want to share with you some, an experience that's been happening recently, Noel Booth, collaboration between Noel Booth's sixth and seventh classes with Brookswood, with district staff, the teachers co-creating a project-based learning experience. Project-based learning is very student-centered, it's about authentic, real-life challenges, and then, again, it's not about just setting kids free to just work on something, it's about scaffolding that and teaching them, teaching them how to collaborate properly, which many of us don't truly know and truly understand how to do. So really taking the time with them to ensure that they're going to be successful in this. And the really cool part of this was the collaboration with the Brookswood students, so you can see in the top left-hand corner, they're actually Skyping with Brookswood students, because what they had to do is they had to come up with a campaign, a broadcast campaign, that was going to reach the teenagers that have not been affected by the Day of Doom virus, so how do you protect yourself? You haven't got the virus yet. So they had to get feedback from the Brookswood teenagers to find out what spoke to them, what resonated with them in terms of their broadcast campaign. So you can see they've got, you know, they've got their dossier, and they've got their roles, they've got their badges, and then we brought in, you know, the big hitters. We put Mel and Woody to work on their acting skills, we're continuing to work on that. Agent Bradford, who went in and shared with them what their mission was going to be and provided their dossier to them. And then, you know, this is a, these are types of learning experiences that don't, they're not a day-long project, they're weeks and weeks, and kids have to persevere, and kids were getting a little off track, so we had to send in Special Agent Gill to check in on the agents in training and try to get them back on track. I do want, yeah, to point out that Agent Bradford... I do want, yeah, to point out that Agent Bradford was so excited after he gave them their mission that he ran out, you know, the alarm went off, and he says, "I have to go," and he ran off. And he, for some reason, just picked up some student's water bottle. We had to get it back to them. I guess he was pretty excited about that. But this project just culminated, and it culminated, and we, this video was shown to the agents in training at Noel Booth from our Commander in Chief.
I am Inspector General Stewart of the Canadian Intelligence Service. You have met my support of Special Agent Gill and Special Agent Bradford. Go along with your agent trainer. Have you keeping me up to date in progress? The Day of Doom biosimilation is your final test in achieving Special Agent status. Not all of the trainees will make it. Your team has worked together to create a media campaign targeted at victim agent 1318. Reports show you each have met all of the requirements to see your Special Agent star. Moving forward, your role is to investigate activities suspected of constituting threats to the security of Canada. And they also take measures to reduce threats to the security of Canada in accordance with ministerial direction. At the end of this message, you'll see a code word. Communicate this code word to your trainer. We'll give you Special Agent Star to adhere on your special security badge.
So one of the things that we're doing when we're building student efficacy is we're building their confidence, their confidence in their skills, allowing them to take more risks. And this is really what we want students to do. We want them to take risks with their learning. And we can, we're always keep in mind, what is the end game? What is the end goal for our students? You know, and we, and we talk about this a lot, about what is the educated citizen? This is actually a document that came out in the eighties from the ministry, but it still stands. And we're unpacking that right now so that we can really think about what is a successful transition from high school? It's not good enough just to walk the stage. What's their plan? What are the things that they've taught, that they've explored? Who are they and what do they want to be? And if they don't know what they want to be yet, that's okay too, but they really need to understand who they are and who they want to be. Really, really important. Along the way, you know, when we have students that are feeling more confident about their skills and believing in themselves, then you really want to give them the opportunities to innovate. And we certainly have done lots of this over the course of this year, right from what's happening in classrooms to what's happening in the district. And it really, when we get to this place, we want to let go of the reins a little bit and see how far they will go with this. And we saw this this year. We saw this with the Idea Summit. We certainly saw this with the Idea X Challenge. When you let, you give the kids the skills, you give them the training, and you let them go, the amazing things that they can come up with.
Imagine a leaky faucet. It's leaking everywhere. It just keeps on going, and all you have access to is a mop. So everyone's frivolously attempting to clean up that water with a mop. But you know what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna walk right past that mop and I'm gonna turn off the tap. Problem solved. And so that's what I think that plastic pollution is like. Is right now we have products and movements that exist to clean up kind of what already exists, but we're not stopping the problem if we don't attack it by the roots, which are like overconsumption, throwaway culture, and mass production. So our educational plan is what turns off the tap by teaching the future generation, making them more environmentally aware, and they're educating. I like, it sort of reaches, it's like a chain reaction that sort of goes through to their parents and to the community that this is a problem. We make them care, or we make them change.
So what, at the end of all of it, when we've got empowered learners who are owning their learning, who are confident and skilled, we can just sit back and watch them make an impact on the world around them.
Thank you, Don. So we spend a lot of time as administrators in our schools to try and create environments that are flexible so that students can have the opportunity to, to, to learn to their fullest capacity. And so we spend money on furniture. We spend money on creating open spaces and different things like that. And I think, you know, the big what-if scenario is what if we were able to start from scratch? Start a brand-new school perhaps, a brand-new high school. What could that look like? Well... So the opportunity that we have at Our Mountain gives us the, gives us the opportunity to really create spaces for all learners. So the spaces in those buildings will take into account students who work as individuals, work collaboratively as groups. We have classrooms that are smaller than regular classrooms, but we have spill-out spaces just outside. You'll notice that the open atrium, which is just an amazing space in that school, provides an opportunity for students to showcase what they've created in their classroom. So just an amazing opportunity. So flexible learning environments for sure, physically speaking. But certainly on the tech side, we have our tech plan that we've been working really hard with over the past few years. And we continue to work at trying to figure out what's best for students. And we'll continue to do that as we go through because the hardware, what's in the students' hands, what's in the teachers' hands is such an important part of the learning piece. But it's not, certainly not everything when we're looking at technology. That's just the pieces. That's just the pieces. Really, what we need to think about is collaborating with one another. And if you look at the slide, there's some examples of our Apple Distinguished School, Brookswood Secondary, our principals here this evening, and Jim Carlich and Sandra Avril, who've been a big part of the push with, in utilizing technology as a tool to support learning. In addition to that, collaborating with our parent community around what are our, what are our students doing? What are our students doing online? How can we ensure that those students are being safe? And again, the school and the district is taking up that responsibility, at least part of that responsibility regarding the partnership that we need to have between us. And we continue to work and work together and collaborate together. You look, another partnership that we have in our district is in Uconnect, where we have an opportunity where there's a partnership between the school, the parents, and the student, where students are in school through the DL Integrated Model two days a week, and then the rest of the learning happens outside of the classroom. And if you get the opportunity to take, to walk through that school, you'll see that technology plays a big part in that, in that journey for students. And on the very right-hand side is our first graduation class from Uconnect. So we're very proud of the, of the students that are getting through. That was about three years ago. But we have to get beyond just the classroom. We have some fantastic classroom spaces. How do we connect our students beyond the classroom, into the environment, beyond the environment, in our, in our community, and with the world? And that's really an important part, and we need to remain networked with one another. I was, I have the good fortune of working with Lynn Phipps Elementary. Jen Fernandez, who's the TL there, does great work with the, with, in collaborating with, networking with the staff there. And they were working, the students were working through a grade five class, was working through a physics science class, and they were working, looking at momentum and friction. And so what the students did was they went through and they designed their own cars, and they had little ramps, and they had, had the cars go down the ramp, and they were problem-solving on why it is, you know, should I have bigger wheels, smaller wheels? How do I keep the wheels on the car? How do I change my design? And it was okay to fail. And it was okay to try again. And I think, again, that mindset is fantastic, and kudos to the teachers who were involved together in that project. As well, we're reaching outside of just the school. We're reaching into the community. So an opportunity for, for Yorkson Secondary students to be a part of something special in the community with one of our, one of our companies called, and I would say called it...
MakerCube.
MakerCube. So we'll just let you watch that happen.
So we were invited by the district to participate in one of these workshops at MakerCube in Langley. So the kids right now are going around using laser cutters, woodworking tools, and soldering knives, and they're making their light-up LED signs. A lot of the elementary schools don't necessarily have access to all of the tools that they have here, and it ties in so nicely with the design process that we are trying to get the kids engaged with. It's really neat as a teacher to be able to see kids be enthusiastic about what they're doing. The kids were asked today to bring a USB cord that attached to a device that no longer works. So really talking about reducing, reusing, recycling. It also gets them to think creatively, to pay attention to detail. And so really, all of those are the competencies that we're trying to get students to think about. And again, those core competencies are woven into every subject for the new curriculum.
And then you can take those ideas, working on it when you're doing hands-on work, and you can, and you can actually build your own machines and then compete against other schools. This is the Walnut Grove Robotics Club, and they competed in the Pacific Robotics Competition. I think they placed 13th out of 50 teams. So again, opportunities for students, getting them the opportunity to create, to work within their passions. And again, having teachers to support those passions is certainly an important part of that, and staff, all staff. The opportunity to get connected, connected beyond, beyond the walls of just our community, going beyond that, going into, the opportunity to go international. Pomosha is an opportunity through Langley Fine Arts, where we've had students from our sister school in Kenya come to Langley Fine Arts and spend a few months with us. In addition to that, students will work through blogs and Skype into classrooms in Kenya and so that students can learn together. This is really a guy going through the, again, the Twitter world and looking at a classroom at Dorothy Peacock, who had the opportunity to have Jacques Cousteau's granddaughter, for those of us that are old enough to remember Jacques Cousteau. And she spoke about the Amazon rainforest and the indigenous people. We can look and learn, students can look and learn through books. They can look and learn with their teachers, but when you look, when you're hearing from experts in the field, what a fantastic opportunity. And I know that Skype's been used all through the district to have authors come in and speak to the, to students and other, other role models as well. And then going beyond, beyond into the world, again, just kind of go back to that Idea X where students were asked to connect with experts in the, in the community. One of those experts was Craig Leeson of Plastic Oceans, and he provided a bit of a shout-out for our district students, so I just wanted to share that with you as well.
Hi, everybody. My name is Craig Leeson. I'm the Director of Plastic Ocean and Chief Global Evangelist for Plastic Oceans International. I'm here at the moment in the gloriously beautiful Fiji Islands. I'm here working with the Asian Development Bank on an initiative. They're pushing $5 billion into helping initiatives to help the oceans because they recognize that our oceans are sick and that we've put enormous pressure on them that allow them, we can't support life on the planet. And you guys already recognize that, so congratulations for you for working with the Idea Summit. And a big shout-out to Langley School for the initiatives that is pushing forward there. When I talk to schoolkids and students around the world, I generally think that you guys are the smartest when it comes to this issue. You know the problem. You know how we got there. You know who's responsible. And you just want the tools to help try to solve this problem so that your future is secure. So keep up the good work and keep on with the initiatives. Good luck with the Idea Summit.
Pretty amazing feedback. Don't need to get an A on an assignment like that when you have that kind of feedback.
Thank you very much. And everything that we have seen tonight wraps up in one idea, that idea of belonging in an inclusive and accepting culture. We can do all of these things for our students, but if we leave some out, the question has to be asked, what have we done? And there's no better group of people to answer that question for us than our survivors of Indian Residential School. The first person you saw on this slide, Maureen Gabriel. She said specifically, when the Second Enhancement Agreement was being signed, that she wished for every student in the district to be wrapped in the blanket of everything that was taken away from her. And her idea is that who I am as a person matters tremendously to the world and how I relate to the curriculum of thinking and communicating. How do I, Mike Morgan, as a straight, able-bodied, cisgendered person, how do I relate to the knowledge that I'm gaining and how do I share my experiences with the world? I share this with you because Langley Fine Arts, as part of reconciliation, you think the fort in Fort originally housed to keep the people of Quantlin out. And our students at Langley Fine Arts wrapping Fort Langley in the pictures of the descendants of those people in a real act of reconciliation. And if you haven't had a chance to go down and take a look at it, you have to. They're incredibly powerful photos. So this quadrant is about a sense of belonging in terms of an inclusive and accepting culture. And of course, adults who know how important belonging is, know how to create those situations for students. You see in the top left-hand corner, I don't know if they're so happy because they don't have to work anymore, but what I'm gonna say is, they're so happy because they know the impact that they've had on students. Again, I repeat, adults who know the importance of belonging will create those spaces for students. You see our wonderful social emotional leader, Gail Markin, presenting to adults about how do you create these spaces for kids? And then, of course, this history of Langley, this brief but very long history of 110 years of LSS, what does it mean to be a saint? And to open your halls again to everyone who's gone through there and the family members of everyone who's gone through there, what does it mean to be proud of your community? And then what does it mean to be brand-new to the country and a parent of an English-language learner? And this is a group of people who are learning English alongside their children, who are learning English in the, in the school district and in the community. And then this powerful story of belonging. So the idea of what can you do when you know you belong somewhere, you've gained independence there? You can then master your gifts, and then you can be generous with them. I don't think I need to explain to anybody the power behind these young people up on the screen. All you have to do is look in the newspaper, the local newspaper, our province, all across to understand the power of this story. But it starts with belonging. And I segue to LSS. At one point in time, LSS had to change the way that they did things for a certain group of students who came to this country. And they did that. They said, "Things can't just be the same." And as a community, as a district, and as a school, you're seeing the results of those changes. Of course, our Idea X, we have generous students who are contributing their ideas based on who they are and their experiences to the rest of the world. Really, really powerful learning. And then, of course, respect for differences. We say respect for learning differences, but really respect for all differences. Again, in the top left-hand corner, our partnership with the Lower Fraser Valley Aboriginal Society. Josette Dandran, again, residential school survivor, giving back to the community in a school setting. Our yearbook's inclusive of Hunkamanum language. The garden, and I always call this a garden, and then Douglas Park gets really mad at me. This is a living library created as a partnership between the Aboriginal Program and Douglas Park, where students right inside of their own school who live in an urban setting can understand indigenous plants and plants that have been brought here. And you look at the learning that's happening, that's outdoor education right in the courtyard. And then finally, the First Salmon Ceremony, this partnership of a respect for the land and the respect for the other beings that we share the land with. Of course, we would be remiss if we didn't mention the leadership role that this board has played in in terms of ensuring that not only our students, whose sexual orientation and gender identity different than those who we have traditionally assumed belonged in schools, are welcomed here. We have done an incredible job of standing up for our values in regards to this. And when you look at the look on the students' faces, you know that they are able to relate to the curriculum in whatever way that they need to, but more importantly, in the way that they are going to use to change the world. Take a look at this. This is Walnut Grove Secondary School Pride Club. How do I, just hit four? This is Walnut Grove Secondary School. This is part of their Pride Week One Event.
What we do is essentially try to create a very welcoming environment for anyone who's part of the LGBTQ community or is maybe questioning their identity, and also for any allies of anyone with friends who are part of that community. We're doing a series of activities throughout the week to kind of celebrate what it means to be part of the LGBTQ community and what it means to have an identity that's seen as sometimes outside of the norm. So today is Rainbow Day, and we're having a bake sale to benefit Rainbow Railroad, which is a non-profit organization that helps LGBT people escape persecution in countries where it's still illegal to be gay or trans or any other letter in the acronym. So everyone in the club did some of the bake.
Think about that for a second in relation to our last point about socially responsible contributing citizens. So there are many places in the world where those students would be persecuted and jailed for who they are. And not only do they recognize that, they are contributing to changing the situation in their own community and abroad. What you see on our next slide is our esteemed colleague, President of the LPVPA, and his school community at the night of the Evening of Inspiration, where we say to our students, thank you for inspiring us. Where we say to our students, thanks for being generous with your gifts. And again, you look at the smiles on the faces of the educators in there and how proud they are that they've been a part of that journey. And then I have to say, my favorite, I've never been to this event, but it's my absolute favorite thing, is the Legacy Wall. And here you'll see Brian Hunter with the, with the award of the Legacy Award. These men and women who have contributed countless hours to individual students and really showing them what it means to be part of something bigger than themselves. Our kids can't help but learn from those things. And then finally, not all of our students are able, in a financial position or in a personal or social situation, to be able to be generous with a larger circle. And you watch them, how are they able to be generous in a smaller place? And you look at the power of what Vanguard has done in regards to their car wash, in regards to their grad events, self-sufficient fundraising in order to put on an event that is second to none in the district. The ability to be self-sufficient in terms of raising the money that they need to make sure that their grad is just as good as the grads around the district. And then finally, before I hand it over to Assistant Superintendent Bradford, if you look in the middle, this is an example of one of our Speech Fest participants at Coghlan Elementary. And the idea that they can speak the truth about who they are to their classmates in an entire school setting. I know that things were not like this when I went to school. And you think of the power and bravery of that young lady to be able to do it, and you think of the grace and generosity of her classmates to be able to listen and be able to understand who that person is. And you see the beaming faces of those people who win the Speech Fest awards, right, being able to share their gift of the gab, so to speak. Coghlan also, you'll see these grade two students who have said, we have a, we have a problem in our community where many people don't have homes, many people don't have a place to sleep at night. What would I do? How could we help them? And those bags are packed with Easter treats and they're packed with Band-Aids in case their feet get sore. And then Langley Fundamental Middle Secondary Mental Health Check. So this understanding that as a group of people, we go through difficult times. As a group of people, we need to support each other. And this school, on this day, Thursday, May 23rd, gathered around each other, spread the message out to the entire school. And I go back to the beginning of those slides and this idea that Maureen Gabriel wanted all students in the district to be wrapped in the things that were taken from her when she was stolen and went away to school. These are minuscule examples of the things that are happening in the district on a daily basis. They're just the ones that our colleagues were able to capture and that people, you know how busy teachers are and support staff, they often can't pull out a phone when that amazing thing's happening and take that picture. But I can't stress enough that this is just a tiny piece of the work that happens every day in our school. And in closing, I'll hand it over to Assistant Superintendent Bradford to wrap up.
Thank you. And we just get fortunate enough to come and share those stories with you tonight. The incredible work in our schools, our staffs that are doing this each and every day, and the support of our community to be able to do this, and the support of our board to be able to do this work. So I want to thank my colleagues who are presenting alongside. Fantastic job tonight. Thank you.
Powerful and inspirational presentation tonight. And coming to the end of the school year, the year moves so quickly and there's so much going on, having a presentation like this that brings it all together, you know, showing the work that really we're here to do every day. And the board has a role in guiding and seeing what's going on on the ground is just so powerful and fantastic. I'm going to just go through our speakers list and then I've got something to say at the end. So I've got first trustee Ross and then trustee Todd and...
Fabulous stories, just wonderful stuff. I mean, I'm really not too sure what to say, but you know, you guys represent a lot of people behind you. You know, you're the face, but there's a whole bunch of people behind you. And you know, Wendy Cook, I wanted to speak to you for a second and your team, you know, and... Pay attention, girl. I got your eyes. And really, all our support staff, everybody, you know, I mean, principals, everybody, custodians, you know, office staff, we can't do it without you, wouldn't want to do it without you. But this just speaks to what we do together. I mean, this is a celebration tonight, but this is, this is your celebration, really. This is, you guys have made this happen and along with our team, right? Just together, we've done wonderful, wonderful stuff. And I just think, I got the best job in the world. I just can't say, maybe Gord's got it, but I got a pretty good gig here.
You, trustee Ross, trustee Todd, and then Vice Chair Coburn.
All of you have told an incredible story tonight. You've woven in love, you've role modeled innovation, and as referenced in one slide, the students truly are our medicine. I was deeply moved right near the beginning when you talked, there was a slide up about the best times of childhood are spent, and it applies to me personally, making forts. And in this case, they were making forts for animals, runs through the woods. We then traversed into the mood walks and the fact that just that outdoor space drops the cortisol levels in our brain and just gives us a sense of peace. The grad walks, how tremendous and powerful that modeling is when you see those students have that outward expression of success. Your connection, and this is all about relationships, and this is about everybody that is in our schools, everybody. It's powerful, it's good stuff. And all I can say is competent and confident students change the world, and we're going to see it in Langley. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Todd, Vice Chair Coburn.
I'm Reverend Ron on the inside. Like, I feel like you on the inside, so. Lots going on there and really exciting presentations, like you guys jazzed it up. There's lots there, and I can say lots, but I think what really is underpinning it all for me, when I watched the, all the quadrants there, I think I saw a lot of kids that maybe five, 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, 40 years ago would have never made it through public education at all. And that's sad in its own right, but what I think is even more tragic about that is that those stories never get to the table to be heard. And those are the people whose experiences are outside of the norm, and they're the people that signal to us that not everything's right for everybody. And we can't change what we don't know is broken. And so when you do this, when you wrap these kids up and you meet their needs and you help them speak their truth, you help inform big decisions in terms of policy and the allocation of resources and who gets what and why we need it. And that's really, in my estimation, how you change the world. Because you tell people that life isn't all good all the time, and you create the space and the safety for other people to come and speak their truth. And then when you hear that truth, you are caused to question if everything is status quo, is good. And you change things, and that impacts the world around you. And that was just a really beautiful presentation, and it displays your humor and your wit and your dedication and how much you love what you do and all of the people that support you. And it was just really, it was really wonderful. And as a trustee, and I saw my fellow trustee's daughter on the screen, and we have, you know, educators on our board, and we are also touched by this. And I see my son's school, he was one of those kids too. So it really, the work that you're doing really does make a difference, and it's not just something that people say. I know for myself and for my own son, that the work that you've all done has touched his life and changed it. So thank you for the work that you do. It's much appreciated.
I don't have any more speakers on the list. I just wanted to close out by just reiterating what everyone else has said. That was, that was an incredibly wonderful presentation, and the work that everyone in this district who's in, in the classroom and in the board office and the front lines is just, we are so fortunate. The passion that lives here and the dedication, the time and the vision, we are a lucky district. And that's because of each one of the people in our district. Do you want to say that I'm hoping in our strategic plan here, we could have superintendent do a video for our board meetings?
Every board meeting.
And just like, welcome to the Board of Education. And I'm glad we also know we have the YouTube equipment for the forthcoming Budget Banter with Brian series. So we will be making t-shirts. And so, thank you for letting us know about that. I didn't know we had this equipment available. There's so much we can do now. So backup plans, we'll have a YouTube station. So thank you for always being, superintendent for, for being down there, you know, in your role as a, as a YouTube star. So thank you again for just the most fantastic presentation, and I know you're going to enjoy a well-deserved summer. So, all right, so we need a mover that the Board of Education receives, the superintendent's report on the framework for enhancing student learning for information as presented, moved by trustee Wilson, seconded by Vice Chair Coburn. Any other comments or questions on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, motions carried. Next item is a, gee, where are we on now? We are on the next one, which is the Annual Truth and Reconciliation Update, Aboriginal Education and Has Been Agreement Update, Superintendent.
Thank you, and I'm going to call on our District Principal of Aboriginal Programming, Mike Pugh. And you know what, I can't think of many people that could follow that presentation that just took place. No pressure, Mike. But if anyone can, it's Mike. And he has stepped in, for Mike Morgan, who I know had a great passion for this. And Mike, you really made it your own, did a beautiful job this year. And the work around truth and reconciliation, Enhancement Agreement has continued on. And again, Mike is one of those, when I just talked about, you're strongest of people around you in terms of support, he's there. And very appreciative of his efforts, and you're in for a real treat tonight too, because there's lots of highlights there. So I'll turn it over to you, Mike.
So no pressure at all. And I don't know if you saw me in the back, my pacing got more and more, the more and more I had to watch that presentation. I don't know if it was good to be here or not. And then to find out there's Budget Banter with Brian coming up. I really feel right now like I should have thrown a picture of my daughter into this presentation, just to, I might have had something there. But I think in all seriousness, tonight I'm going to hear, I'm going to, I'm here to talk about two things. One being the update on truth and reconciliation, being the update on the progress of the Aboriginal Enhancement Agreement. And I would be remiss if I don't start by recognizing our partner groups and the work that all of them do, whether it's our LTA and our QP Unions and our LPVPA. We are able to do this because of their work. It is not just the Aboriginal Program that does Aboriginal education. We all do it together. And if we didn't have such strong relationships and strong partnerships, we wouldn't be able to do the work we do. At the same time, I also do need to recognize the work of Donna Robbins and Janet Stromquist, and the support of Julie Allen. And I think as well, I would be remiss if I don't honor the work that Mike Morgan put into this document with the group and the work that he has done previous to me. And I'm eternally grateful to Mike for the work that he's done. And I would also be remiss if I don't acknowledge the fact that tonight we are on the traditional territories of the Matzki, the Quanton, the Katsi, and the Semiamu First Nations. And we are honored that we're able to do our work here and that I'm able to live and learn and work here on a daily basis on their nations and their territories. Tonight's presentation, I'm going to frame around two of our first principles, first people's principles of learning. The first being that learning is relational, it is focused on connectedness, that reciprocal relationship, that sense of place. It's almost ironic that I'm following Mike and what he talked about and that sense of belonging, and now we're weaving that through this presentation as well. How important that connectedness is to the success of students. And as we also saw in the previous presentation, how important it is for learning to happen and it's embedded in that memory, that history, and the importance of story within the work that we do. And so those are the two lenses that I use to frame my presentation tonight as we move forward. So the first thing we talked about was truth and reconciliation. This was a motion put forward by the board in 2015, and that as a district, we will continue to move forward on reconciliation, and that it was something that the board wanted an annual report on as to where we've been. So when we discuss reconciliation in the district, we talk about it from two basic premises. The first is that we hold indigenous knowledge as equal to knowledge that's come from elsewhere, and that we examine our own personal relationship to indigenous peoples. And that picture in the middle is from the Yorcson Creek yearbook this year. It says, "Ya'astal kustakaya," meaning we are wolves working together. And those are all hands of kids that attend Yorcson Creek. So when we talk about what does it mean to examine my relationship to indigenous peoples, well, it's really asking yourself, what do I know about indigenous people? What is my understanding? And how have I come to know it? For many of us, we have our understandings of indigenous people that have come to us from a colonized, Eurocentric model, that gave us bits and pieces and this idea of pan-indigenism that we have come to know, and it is relearning what we know. But I think also importantly, it's, once I know that, and how do I know it, what are those implications? What implications does it have for my educational experience, for my teaching practice, for my personal life? What is it that this is going to inform moving forward as we talk about reconciliation? And so that medicine wheel there is a project done at Richard Bullpit, where it's part of the Project of Heart, done by one of the Aboriginal support workers there previously, and the kids all did a tile and then they placed it into that medicine wheel, and with the work of our maintenance department who built the cedar rim around it. And that will be placed with teachings for students just outside the gym. And so that every time they go in, they'll remember those learnings, they'll know what it's about, and for those future generations to come, they'll understand the meaning behind it and where they've been. But to highlight some of the things we've talked about this year, there was a lot of work around the B.C. Tripartite Education Agreement. And while that is very ministerial and very documentative, it really gets at the fact of, we are trying to... we are trying to meet the needs where they are at. Whether it is the basic transportation agreements, trying to figure out how we can get our students on reserve to schools, or starting to build in those learning, uh, local education agreements to help support learners, uh, in their journey. That has been some very important work and the recognition of there may be extra supports needed for our indigenous students to make, help them be successful. This is a plaque. There's a number of informational plaques along Yorcson Creek, just, uh, east of Dorothy Peacock, between Dorothy Peacock and Gordon Greenwood. And this was work done between one of the teachers there and her class and Sesmalot, our indigenous language teacher in the Aboriginal program. And they worked together to create with the township of Langley, these plaques. And you can walk across the bridge. And there are plaques talking about, uh, the different animals in the area, the different plants and providing information about Yorcson Creek while also including, uh, local language into it. And, and also, uh, student drawings throughout. This is from our Aboriginal family gathering at Christmas time. And what I love about this picture is you've got students, staff, community members who are openly in a school practicing their culture and being part of drumming, where that never would have happened years ago. But they are proud of their heritage, they are proud of who they are and proud to share that with everybody else there. Of course, we had, uh, Orange Shirt Day. And this is Phyllis Webster, who is, uh, of course, the originator of the Orange Shirt Day movement. Uh, and she was at Yorcson Creek and presented, um, at Yorcson Creek a number of times that day. Uh, this, I love this, this is our Hunka Manum language class from Fort Langley, grade six and seven. Uh, they went on a, a field trip down to the fort. And they had lunch with an elder. They drummed, they learned about their culture inside the fort. And as Mike talked about, the device that was designed to keep Quantlin out was now opening its doors to not only Quantlin students, but non-indigenous students who are together learning the Hunka Manum language, learning to sing and learning to drum. And they had one of their classes today and just spontaneously broke into song. They, they were standing around and somebody picked up the drum and started to drum. And the rest of them just joined in. And it is powerful when you get to see these young students learn the language and use the language uh, that they have the opportunity to learn. We of course did a, a lot of work around the Moosehide campaign. Um, and pushing forward the agenda of having those difficult conversations around violence towards women and children, both indigenous and non-indigenous. Um, and there's tremendous work that has happened in a number of our schools here around this project. And I, I won't speak anymore to it because it does connect with the next part of the presentation. Uh, and Mike already did discuss this as well. This is a, a picture of a number of, uh, our Quantlin members as well as some staff members from the, the Aboriginal program standing in front of, uh, the matriarch picture of Mrs. Gabriel. And, um, just what stands out to me is the pride, that sense of belonging, that smile for all of them that they actually belong here and that they feel, you know, it came from basically a question of, well, where is Quantlin in all the pictures that we see in Fort Langley? And we have this power of connection between a staff member and students who move a project forward that is collaborative, that connects our photography students at fine arts with our creative writing students to document the history of their Quantlin people and to share that with everyone. And it was a powerful exhibit. And as Mike said, if you haven't had the chance to get down there, please do. Go and walk through and see all the pictures that are there. But certainly one of our highlights this year, um, for some amazing work by some allies in our district. And we have some amazing allies. But to speak to you today, I brought forward, uh, Steph Brasnet and Bronwyn Kelly, two teachers from, uh, Walnut Grove Secondary School, who are here to share their work that they've done around, uh, the BCTF resource for missing and murdered indigenous women and girls. And so I will hand the microphone over to them.
Hello, I'm Bronwyn Kelly.
And Steph Brasnet.
And as Mike said, we're both teachers from Walnut Grove Secondary School. Uh, I'm a social studies teacher and Steph is an English teacher. And we're going to talk to you first about how we came to be involved in this work. Uh, so as a social studies teacher, I started in two thousand and four. And I was extremely disheartened to see the lack of evidence and coverage of indigenous history as well as the crises that many of our indigenous communities face in present day. For example, there was a paragraph on residential schools in our socials eleven text. The sixty scoop was not mentioned. Uh, murder to missing indigenous were women and girls and the crisis around that was not mentioned. And, uh, anything to do with land title was definitely discussed with a colonialist bias. Um, so as I started prepping my lessons and then when I, and so for socials eleven, and then when I began to teach social justice twelve, I started to dig a lot deeper and educate myself on these issues. And, um, as I brought the kids into it, there was definitely an engagement that came with recognition of the injustices that the indigenous peoples of our country have faced for over a hundred years. Um, when I was working at Brookswood, we took all of the grade elevens to the TRC in Vancouver. And again, this powerful engagement that came with the being at that place and witnessing that event um, was very obvious in the kids. Uh, and then when the opportunity, when I was at Walnut Grove, I've been at Walnut Grove for three years now. And then last year, I started working with Steph and, um, Janet over on the Our Voices Will Guide Us, the BCTF guide for the murder and missing indigenous women and girls content in the classroom. And, uh, again, the kids rose up and we'll talk more about that later. Um, what you're seeing throughout our slideshow are examples of student work. This was done by a social, a boy in my socials ten class last year where he wrote out a name, the name of every missing and murdered indigenous girl, um, on that map of Canada. So this is what you'll see throughout. And I'm going to pass it over to Steph now.
Yeah, um, so my passion for the topic that has currently come into my curriculum, um, missing murder indigenous women is, uh, I did my masters in indigenous Canadian literature and developed a passion for learning about and teaching about, um, missing and murdered indigenous women and the national and international crisis, um, that exists today. Uh, I was fortunate enough to teach at LSS a little while ago. And there are some familiar faces here, which is nice. Um, and that was the first year that we were able to take students down to the downtown east side on Valentine's Day, February fourteenth, to participate in the Women's March for Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women. I had the privilege of going with Brian Coleman and a few, um, other teachers along with almost twenty students. And the reactions, their reactions to the experience were shocking. They were speechless for days because of what they witnessed, what they saw, what they participated in. And that just further motivated me to bring it into my classroom. Um, and the reason that I've chosen to bring it into my classroom, um, is not only my passion, but English language is the foundation of the colonial education system. And English language class itself perpetuates a hierarchy through the literature that is taught. Um, this type of literature is typically dead old white guys. It's canonical literature and that's what it revolves around. Um, so the reason for me to bring other newer relative and current issues like the missing murder indigenous women crisis is because it is current, it is real, it is not history, it's not fiction. It's real lived stories. And to encourage the kids to make meaningful connections to the ongoing current events that they see about, they hear about, they participate in on the march. Um, there aren't even words to describe the connections that they make as you're seeing it. And so often the students, through the work that we do, they get sad, they get mad, they get frustrated. And then it gets to a point where they want to get involved. They want to do something, they want their voices heard. And this is where reconciliation in action happens in the classroom. And you're going to see some of the progress of that right now.
Um, so this is, this is a social studies ten summative assignment that I did, um, last, I started this last year using the guide to help me create this summative assignment. And, um, the projects that you're seeing are a result of this. And, um, before this final project, there was a lot of, um, foundation for learning that needed to be laid. Um, we needed to be able to discuss and call into question privilege, systemic racism. And we needed to build ethical spaces that we could have these honest and open discussions and realize that, um, some of their peers might be living this experience and this crisis. Um, we needed to learn the terminology to have respectful and informed discussions and to remove the ignorance that has dominated our classroom discussions around indigenous issues. Uh, it's always interesting, you can tell, you can often tell what is being discussed at home by what the kids talk about in the classroom, what their points that they add. Um, and we were able to build those ethical spaces. We were able to have those honest discussions with respect and with informed terminology and with, um, structured research so that they could come to their own conclusions.
Yeah, so, um, their conclusions were, as you can see, very diverse in terms of medium. From, uh, watercolor paintings to sketches to the Faceless Dolls project, um, and a number of, of other initiatives such as the Red Dress Project. Um, even some of the, some of the guys, the hands-on guys were in the metal room. They were cutting, cutting metal and there were leaves and there were fish. And the metaphors and similes that they used to describe their experiences of having learned about this was exuded in all of their final projects. And this reconciliation in action has taken a further step. And Mike alluded to it, um, a little while ago with recently at our school, the Moosehide Campaign. Um, so we brought that into our school this year, um, shortly after Christmas. And we were apprehensive about how the students would respond, um, especially having, you know, talked a lot about missing and murdered indigenous women. Because the Moosehide Campaign in its truest form is a grassroots movement, um, to end violence against women and children. And we targeted the boys or those who identify as male in our school. Because so many, so often the humanitarian clubs at school are female or those who identify as dominated. So we wanted to kind of offer an alternative. Um, and man, did they ever respond. So we had, uh, the first day that we opened up the doors for Moosehide Campaign, a safe space to talk, we had about thirty-five male students come in. Um, that has kind of shrunk down to a solid core of about fifteen boys, mainly seniors, grade twelves, who meet once a week, Wednesdays at Flex, um, in my room in my portable. Um, and they have discussions. Here are the, some of the Moosehide boys. Um, and their conversations range from what they can do in their community at the local level to end violence against women and children, how they can change their language, their tone, their body language, um, their approach to women, you know, concerns about safety. They talk about entitlement to bodies, healthy masculinity, what it looks like. And how the call-out culture has been revised to question others about why they choose to say certain things or say things a certain way. Um, and probably the most heartwarming of it is a number of these boys are athletes. They're superstar athletes in the schools. And the conversation, the hot topic has been and continues to be locker room talk. And to hear a number of senior boys put everything that they're feeling on a table and make themselves vulnerable and discuss things that they have potentially said or heard that now upsets them and they realize why it's not okay. And how they can change that going forward and call others out respectfully, not in an aggressive way to create anger, but in a way where they say, why did you choose that word? What could you have said differently? What might you say next time? And these are grade twelve boys in a locker room. So it's kind of, it's quite heartwarming when you hear that this, these are the conversations that they are trying to change within the school. And it's starting local. And a lot of them are graduating this year and it hurts my heart a little bit, well, a lot. But, um, they already have plans in motion. They've been talking to grade tens and elevens to get them to take over, to keep the ball rolling. And it's really something because they're asking them, you know, what do you envision doing next year? Where do you see this going? How can we keep the conversation going? We don't want it to end here. So the impact is just beginning. Where do we go from here? It's just starting. This was a kind of a pilot year. Um, but the response to missing and murdered indigenous women and girls at school has now suddenly created a world of other conversations that are being implemented at the local level first and foremost, which is where we think it should start.
And so just in, in summary, um, as mentioned earlier, and as very obvious by the work done with the Moosehide, um, our youth, when they are informed of an injustice, they will stand up for it. They will recognize that something needs to be done, something isn't right, something needs to be fixed. And that is what our kids will do if we talk about these things in our classrooms. And we have an opportunity to do this and we have a responsibility to do this, not only from the TRB, but also now as a country with the results of the inquiry. And we are committed to do this. And it is also really, really inspiring to see the number of our colleagues who are also committed to doing this. They're seeking us out to get informed themselves, to figure out how can they do this at different levels in the classroom. Um, they attend, we, we ran a pro D day and the attendance was, was fantastic. And the discussion was rich. And we are really, really grateful for the opportunity to be doing this work and we appreciate all the support that we get with it. Thank you.
So, uh, I've now got another tough act to follow again. Um, to me, what stands out was so amazing about this is, is something that was a passion of, of an educator to start and have that conversation, um, now moving forward and it's on the kids. And it's not about us pulling the kids in, it's about us, as Bronwyn said, educating those kids and informing them. And they will move mountains with what they can do. Uh, so that is the end of the truth and reconciliation part. And so I will look to whether I can make questions on that part now.
We do have two questions. Part, um, and then we can, uh, go on to the next part if that works. I have trustee Ross and trustee Wilson. So trustee Ross first.
Thank you, team. And, um, I guess my, my only comment really is, uh, we shouldn't have been mandated to do all this stuff, uh, the new curriculum, et cetera, but we get to do this stuff. And that's the joy. I see you guys, you get to do this stuff. Every day is a joy to come to school. This is not work. I get paid to do this. What a deal. Pinch me. This is great. So I, I just, that's how I receive it.
I agree with you. I, I love, I love my job. I really do. And I love working with kids and I love working with, um, the tough staff. But I do think we also need to recognize that it is in our curriculum now. It needs indigenous worldviews and perspectives need to be integrate, integrated. And, um, for some people that is tough to do, right? They might not be comfortable with it, but we need to get to a place where we are all integrating this into our classrooms. But yes, I completely agree with you. I, I do get to do this and that's pretty awesome. Yeah.
Okay. Well, great presentation. That's just amazing work you're doing. And, um, yeah, mine was a couple of quick comments, just that last night at Brookswood's Convocation Speed, our program, they had Pam Goldsack, one of the Aboriginal support workers, not only just bring the traditional greeting, but actually, you know, impart a little bit of wisdom on the protocols of lineage. And, and I just felt like I see it in so many places in our district. And I just think, you know, the new curriculum is, is one thing, but this actual, the staff and the district are going so far above and beyond to really, really work on reconciliation. And I guess my question is, um, so much of what we heard over the last few years were people needing to overcome their fear. And everybody you talk to, educators, everyone was so fearful that they couldn't talk about reconciliation because they might get it wrong. And so if they weren't an expert in the subject, I, I can't really talk about it because I might do something wrong or say something wrong. So. So what have you found has been the best sort of tool or way to, to help people overcome that?
Honestly, for me and my short-term teacher, it's been creating a space for them to have those conversations. Creating a space where they feel safe, that is inclusive, for them to bring questions and comments and concerns like that, not feeling comfortable, to the table to address them. Because if they have a question or concern, nine times out of ten, they're not the only one feeling that way. So when you create a space where they can converse and talk about it openly, they're always surprised to find out that they're not the only one and that there are conversations that can be had that are uncomfortable at times, but all the more reason that they should be had, in my experience.
And if I could just add to that, we are very lucky and likely that we have the Indigenous Worldviews and Perspectives Department head, which I am at Walnut Grove. And that is one of those safe spaces where teachers can go to and say, "I need help with this." And I know not all districts have that. And I'm really grateful to be, to have the opportunity to do that. And then that creates, that widens our circle of who we can go to. Like I have Steph now because I, you know, we work together through that. And then all these other people and also Mike and Una Anne, our Aboriginal support workers. We have a really great circle of people that we can go to. The, like Quantlin, like I emailed Janet Seromquist with a quick question today and she got back to me right away and it's just, we're, we're very well supported. Yeah.
All right, thank you. So, oh, sorry, Vice Chair Coburn, and then we'll go on to the next part.
So, and I don't know who would like to answer this. I suspect it might be you. So as a board, what can we do to support you, to support us, to support us all in our journey of reconciliation?
I get that quite, okay. I think, I know, power, pressure's on here. I think what it comes down to is what Steph alluded to, the creation of safe spaces, the ability to have those conversations and the willingness to learn. And that starts with it being reflected within our board, who continues to, to ask questions, to want to learn and, and places an importance on Aboriginal education. The opportunity to showcase two amazing allies. And what I have discovered is, is we have so many. And continuing to support those initiatives. And there will be times when things go wrong. And, and working together with everyone involved to then correct those mistakes and move forward, that support from the board is, is fantastic. And demonstrating that we're learning and, and understanding, I think, that at this point, reconciliation is no longer about, hey, we had an assembly or we had this big event. That it is things we do in our day-to-day life and the way we lead that says that we're, we're actually behind reconciliation. It's not about having the big event. It's not about just including a traditional acknowledgement. It's about the way we've actually changed who we are and the way we lead going forward.
Thank you. And I also would like to thank you and your department for the Aboriginal awards celebration that I attended. It was always really wonderful and you guys go above and beyond. And also to the Quantlin Nation for their invitation to the salmon. First of all, and it's my understanding that they, they, they do that all on their own, without any district supporter involvement. And I just think it's really important that we acknowledge that contribution and that it's very reciprocal. They are giving, and again, we are in a position of taking. So I think it's important to acknowledge that.
Great, thank you. Thank you for your portion of the report. It was just wonderful. We will have an opportunity to thank you again at the end. We're gonna go on to the next part.
A tough act to follow there. The second part here deals with our Aboriginal enhancement agreement and looking at the progress we've made now in, through years three and four. And so I will throw some data at you because data is always important to have to, to talk about where we're at. But also the, the piece of understanding about what are we doing from, from this point moving forward. So just to reiterate our goals, there are two goals in the enhancement agreement. Goal number one being to establish trusting, respectful partnerships between schools, the school district and Aboriginal community, acknowledging that shared responsibility to implement this agreement. And within there, some of the markers that we looked at as, as a possibility to, to measure that relationship. One is this idea is the community as teacher. So as trustee Coburn alluded to, our working partnership with Quantlin and also with our K着西 and Matasque First Nations and Semiambo First Nations. We had the opportunity with our district support team, which is a group of teachers in careers, in instructional services, in learning support and in the Aboriginal program. We met three times this year. And that one picture down in the bottom corner is, is us on a place-based tour. So we spent the morning with Quantlin First Nation, learning about Quantlin history. And then went out in the afternoon with Lakatin and with Sesmalot. And they drove us around on a district school bus. So you can imagine what it's like with thirty adults on a district school bus. It was a lot of fun. But they drove us around and we saw different traditional parts of the territory where they were able to talk to us about what was going on and what was happening and what it used to be like here and what, what it means to them in terms of us knowing about their traditional territory and what went on. The top picture there with the blankets is, is a picture of the blanket exercise and the incredible and powerful learning that comes from doing that as a group. And the last is one of our Aboriginal sport workers who's taken, worked with in collaboration, the Learning Commons, the teacher librarian at Wicks Brown, where they have done plant walks and information between older students and their younger buddies. And they go out and they look at the plants and they learn about our local Indigenous plants. And they just travel around the school. And this is all just around Wicks Brown. Our cultural presenters program that really is an inclusive group of Indigenous people sharing their history, whether they be Inuit, Métis, First Nations, whether they be local First Nation or from somewhere else. They share their understandings and their teachings with our kids, with our staff. And they lead by the word and the actions and the example that they set. They teach us to respect ourselves, each other and the earth. And most importantly, they, they work with teachers to connect to those important life lessons and those great lessons that they have and bring in Indigenous knowledge and Indigenous understanding. As Bronwyn alluded to, our Aboriginal Worldviews and Perspectives Department head and team leaders that really, as I look at it, have a three-fold job. So they work with other staff in the school to talk about the curriculum and to address those issues around feeling uncomfortable or feeling uncertain as to what to talk about or how to address it. They have resources that they can provide, both professionally, for your own personal learning and also for working within the class with students to help and improve that understanding. And most importantly there, they are also an act of reconciliation. With their understanding and the things they do, they help to move reconciliation forward on a day-to-day basis. And we have an Aboriginal Worldviews and Perspectives Department head or team leader at every high school and at every middle school. And our hope is that as we move forward, these positions will continue and we will look to our elementary schools for support. And we will look to our secondary schools and our middle schools, providing further support for these great roles. And that working together, that sense of yahastal, working together will continue. And of course, it's important that our schools do have a space for their Aboriginal program. When we first started, we had a small number of dedicated staff who worked to cover multiple schools with incredible numbers of kids at every school. And in some cases, they were only able to be at a school for a day every two weeks. And so finding that dedicated space was difficult. When we look at it from the lens of, well, we've got so many staff involved in our school and they're here more often. But we're at the spot now where almost all of our Aboriginal support workers at most have two schools. And they're there hopefully at least one day a week, but if not more. And having that space that is theirs, that is dedicated to them is so key because it says first and foremost to our Aboriginal support workers that you are valued and you belong. And so we continue to work with our schools around finding those places that work for our Aboriginal support workers in those schools. And everyone is different in terms of their preference and we work together in our relationship to find that. But it is key that we continue that journey to find those dedicated spaces for our program. The second goal there focuses on that sense of belonging, right? It's working together as a team to create that strength-based, personalized, student-centered learning that respects Aboriginal history, cultural values and nurtures a sense of belonging for the success of all Aboriginal students. And one of the things that we have done a lot of this year is not just look at where our Aboriginal students are, but start to look at the gaps. If our Aboriginal students are achieving at the same level as our non-Aboriginal students, even if that's low, we're doing something right because the gap isn't there. It is the gap that concerns me on a daily basis. And it is that that we look to that tells us we have work to do. And so once we start to identify these inequitable outcomes, we can work together with schools, with district staff, with leadership to apply strategies to work to eliminate these conditions. So in terms of the data we're gonna look at here in a second, it comes from what is known now as the Our School surveys or the Tell Them For Me survey, as well as the Aboriginal How Are We Doing Report, which is distributed every year by the Ministry of Education. So the first indicator that we looked at is what does it look like for our students transitioning from grade eleven to grade twelve? And in comparison to our non-Aboriginal students. So you can see there in the orange, those are our non-Aboriginal students and how we have done with our Aboriginal students in comparison. And there is a small gap. And that is a gap that is actually slightly smaller than the provincial average. But there is still a gap. We see it for our female, our, our male students. And we see it again for our female students. And one of the interesting things is we start to see here, and you will see it again, over these last four years, we've seen a great fluctuation in the results of our female students and a more consistent pattern with our male students. And in fact, we actually managed to get rid of an equity gap and create one the opposite way a few years ago. I had the opportunity to be at a meeting with the ministry and they shared these completion results. So these are results for our students who they have six years from the moment they enter grade eight to graduate. And if you manage to do that, then within six years, then you're considered to be successful. And if you don't, you're considered to be unsuccessful. The provincial average for non-Aboriginal students past year was eighty-six and a half percent, an increase of six point eight percent since two thousand one, two thousand two. In comparison with our Aboriginal students, which is nearly seventy percent across the province, an increasing of twenty-seven point one percent in that same timeframe. But when we start to break down that Aboriginal student six-year completion rate, we see some very concerning numbers start to come up. First off, for whatever reason, our Aboriginal students who live on reserve have a lower completion rate than those who do not. This speaks to the need for the B.C. Tripartite Education Agreement, which we alluded to earlier. If you are an Aboriginal student with diverse abilities, your graduation rate, six-year completion rate is less than half. If you are an Aboriginal student who is living in care, which we know there is an over-representation of students in care, of Aboriginal students in care, is nearly just above two out of every five of our Indigenous students will graduate. And if you are an Aboriginal student with diverse abilities and you are living in care in this province, one in three of those students will graduate. And I understand that from my work with the position as District Vice Principal for Enhanced Services for Children in Care, we have a number of students who are Aboriginal with diverse abilities, living in care. And this is an area that we will be working on as a district. For our own district results, you'll see there that our Aboriginal students are actually increasing in the past year. And we are starting to see an increase again where we had seen a decline in the previous two years and that we are above the provincial average. But there is still an equity gap of nearly eleven percent. And as I alluded to earlier, for whatever reason, the trend with male students is that really their six-year completion rates is very stable. Two-thirds we're seeing within that. And in fact, we're seeing an increase whereas overall for all of our non-Aboriginal students, we're actually seeing a slight decrease as we move forward here. And then we see that fluctuation again with our female students' results, bounces around from year to year. And yet, we still do have a slight difference in the equity gap there going forward. So this is, we talked about isolations for male students. And then for female students, we've seen that fluctuation. And that is a wonder for me as to why we've seen the fluctuation and what's been going on there. Attendance is a big thing. When I was a vice principal, I always talked to kids about, you know, when you're there, you're able to be successful, but the more you miss, the more, the less likely you are to be successful going forward. And for whatever reason, we see over the past four years through the Tell Them For Me survey that our Aboriginal students have a higher percentage, both male and female, of self-reporting, that they are more regularly truant or absent from school altogether. From that Tell Them For Me survey, we're also then able to speak to that sense of belonging. And as Mike alluded to in his presentation earlier, that's the key. That sense of belonging is so important. And we see distinct equity gaps in their reporting around valuing what they are learning, meaning that our non-Aboriginal students report a higher valuing of what they are learning than our non-Aboriginal, than our Aboriginal students do. That while both groups see a sharp decrease after grade six and it's distinctly different in male students, we see a decreasing self-esteem. And especially for our male Aboriginal students, there is a sharp decrease in their self-esteem from grade six on. The same is true for their sense of belonging to the schools. And these positive relationships we see consistently are lower grade to grade between non-Aboriginal and Aboriginal students. And we see a distinct gender gap between male and female reporting, sorry, between Aboriginal male and non-Aboriginal males and Aboriginal females and non-Aboriginal female reporting. And those positive relationships not only cover student with teacher, but cover student with student as well, all of which speaks to that sense of belonging. And we know about this power of connection. We know that extensive research says that in order for students to feel successful, they need at least two adults in their life who genuinely believe and can communicate to those students that they are successful and that they care about them. However, for our Aboriginal students, for our children in care or those with diverse abilities, the data shows it's more likely four or five. And so what we're left to deal with is that we often aren't able to communicate that to our kids. And sometimes, as Brené Brown says in her book, Braving the Wilderness, sometimes the most dangerous things for kids is that silence that we leave them in, that allows them to construct their own stories. Stories that almost always cast them as alone, unworthy of love and belonging. And this is not the message we want to send. And so in the end, we talk about what unites people. It was that wise man, Tyrion Lannister from Game of Thrones, who says, "What unites people? Armies, gold flags? No, it's stories. There's nothing in the world more powerful than a good story. Nothing can stop it and no enemy can defeat it." And we saw that tonight in the presentation before where the, my colleagues stood up and shared stories. That's what we want to hear and that's what we can work with are the stories of our students. Whether it's learning what those stories are so we can better support them or whether it's sharing and celebrating them in what we do. It is the stories that is vital that we get out. And so the question becomes now, what are our next steps? Well, for Well, for our program, it's about continuing to develop strategies to support students, and specifically, supporting them to be successful in their school of choice. We have seen from data in the past that quite often when students are asked to leave their school and go somewhere else, that they are not successful. And that specifically, unfortunately, despite all their great work, our alternative pathways are not as successful with those kids quite often because our students are forced into making that choice to go there. So we want to work with our schools to ensure that students get to remain in their school of choice and that we develop strategies to support them to be successful. We want to continue to build connections between the Aboriginal program and learning support services. Because what we see in provincial data, and of course, it's replicated in our own district data, is that our Aboriginal students have a higher amount of designations of behavior disabilities and a lower amount of learning disabilities, and we see it flip with the provincial, with non-Aboriginal students. Lower behavioral disabilities designations and higher learning designation, learning disability designations. And so investigating why that is, what is going on in the process, and Mike in his work with Learning Support Services has already done a tremendous start on that, and we're going to continue to work together. The action plans for learning within each school, not only now identifying who are at-risk learners and who are struggling learners, and identifying specifically who our Aboriginal learners are that are struggling, our children in care, our learners with diverse abilities, but moving that step forward and actually identifying what are our strategies? How are we going to support that kid with their story? And how are we going to turn it around? And that we continue to have those supports to meet and address the needs of the individual students. So we talked about the B.C. Tripartite Education Agreement. But we're also now in the early stages of developing a plan of partnership between Quantlin First Nation and the Langley Education Center to run a satellite campus on Quantlin in their new community center that will access, that will be accessed by Quantlin students and elders. And we had a meeting last night, and a number of elders came out excited about possibly coming back, whether it's taking classes for their own learning, or hopefully for some, taking classes to one day walk that stage and be a golden eagle at our Aboriginal Achievement Awards. But it's a tremendously exciting time for that work being done. And of course, we, as I alluded to, will continue to push for space within schools and that work and that partnership and that valuing of the work that our Aboriginal support workers do on a daily basis that builds that sense of belonging. Because in the end, what we're after is the fact that every child matters. And what is good for our Aboriginal students is good for all students, and that the story of every single child and every single handprint there matters to what we do. Thank you.
Wow. It's been a night of really powerful reports. Thank you. I do have a speakers list. The first name is trustee Todd.
Once again, thank you. I look forward to a new story, and that story is the day when there is no gap. We eliminate that gap. There's a difficult question out there, though, isn't there? That's why, and I know a little bit about it, behavior designations are somewhat subjective. They're the ones that really you don't have to have an ed psych for. They're the ones that basically counselors, perhaps someone else can say, oh yeah, they have a behavior designation. And the difference between the R and the H is simply like an outside agency involved and, you know, a little more severe in degree. That's a difficult conversation that starts, as you say, Mike Morgan's probably had started that. So I'm not sure, maybe there's a bias. And, and why, why that occurs is just, it's heart-wrenching to me. Because once that happens, you know, we know, as you showed the figures there, and where can we go? The important thing in some of the data you talked about, and maybe you want to comment for me, is when you talk, I don't know if there's such as a typical student, but the two adults in the building, and you're saying that a student who's got diverse abilities and that, they, and Aboriginal, they may need four or five. So what are we doing to wrap around those students?
So to address the two parts, yeah, I would agree with you, there is a bias, and that bias isn't necessarily within the people who are doing the work. It, I think our work in a number of areas will start to address, and as Stefan Bronman talked about, the systemic races and the systemic biases that are inherent in the tools we use and in what we have. And so I think there's a great deal of work there because we have amazing professionals in Learning Support Services who, who want to see the best for kids. And so, yeah, I think there is some self-reflection there for all of us and for what we do, and it's a bigger piece than just our district, too. In terms of the adults for caring, I think one of the big things within the Aboriginal enhancement agreement is the discussion around working towards circle of caring plans for all our Indigenous students. I've had the opportunity to be a part of a number of meetings over the last few weeks as we get towards the end of the school year for our students who maybe aren't as successful as they'd like to be right now, and bringing together our Aboriginal support workers, our resource teachers, our administrators, district staff, school staff, to really wrap around that child and talk about, first and foremost, from the point of view of, yeah, they may not be successful right now in terms of graduation, or it might not look like it's going to be, but how are we going to get them there? Because we're not going to simply say, well, sorry, you're not this year. It's about developing a plan and how are we going to move forward? And how are we not only going to utilize school staff and district staff, but how are we including parents within that? Because it's the parent piece that's so vitally important as we move forward and working together, that sense of yah-yestal that we talk about is so vitally important there to include and create that wraparound care. And ideally, hey, I'd love to have a circle of caring plan for every single student regardless of who you are, what your situation is, and where you come from. It's that sense of adults in the building and adults in your life who demonstrate that they care about you and they believe in you, and they're going to support you moving forward.
Thank you, Vice Chair Cooper.
It feels like, like tonight's The Hunger Games of like board presentations, and everybody wants to be district one. And you really like, you love that pressure, hey? So I just, a couple of comments and then a question. So I really appreciate your presentations, and they're, what I really, really appreciate is your theoretical lens, your highly theoretical, the way that you approach things, and it makes me think of Pierre Bourdieu, obviously, and social capital, and that misalignment between what is reflective in our homes and then when we come to the system. And the system doesn't recognize, or we don't recognize. So in like history of public education, it was designed, and it's reflective of more of a middle-class sensibility, and I think that that's that trauma. I think that school spaces are traumatic for kids because they haven't had a lot of success, and what they're seeing doesn't mirror what they come from. And that we, to solve this problem, have to change what we're delivering to match our client, for lack of a better word. And I really feel that that's what you and a lot of other people are doing. So this isn't working, this isn't reflective of identity or known way of living, so let's change how we deliver this. And what I think is so important and the power of story is the LEC moving up to the the Quantlin Hall. Because when I was fourteen, I watched my mom go back to school, and I watched my mom go to university, and I watched my mom always go back. And I think that it is so important for children who haven't felt successful to see adults who haven't been successful go back and become successful, and that, that changes the narrative. They fill in that empty space with the story of you can go anytime. So again, in terms of what the board can do to help this, what can the board do to support you to get to where we need to be?
Wow. You're asking tough questions tonight. Not just tonight. I, I think, you know, it's not as easy as saying, what can the board do on this one? I think every time we come up against a new situation or a unique idea, being there to support it, to move forward, to do the heavy lifting with us. I think that's the key to moving whatever we want to do forward in all the work we do. And so just continuing to be a supportive board around inclusive education. Because inclusivity is not just about LGBTQ, it's not just about including Aboriginal education in the curriculum because it's there, it's about, inclusive education is education for all, and everyone has a safe space. And so continuing to, to look at those as we move forward and how we can access that, that's, that's a supportive key.
Right. Well, thank you for another fantastic report, and it was wonderful to see a report that showed the successes in the areas that they still have improvement. And seeing the, the work and the effort and the team that has gone into this is, is really inspiring and goes back to that two thousand and fifteen commitment of, of the district, and seeing that evolve has been a truly, truly moving experience. So thank you again for coming out for the annual report. We will see you again in next June, in, in between that two, but thank you very much. Fellow trustees, my legs are asleep, and I'm wondering if we could take a five-minute recess, just because we do have two more reports after that, just, that would be, can I get somebody move for recess? Move by Vice Chair Cooper, second by trustee Ward. We will come back here at exactly, oh, sorry? Oh, no, just saying, we'll come back here at nine thirty, if we could then all in favor. There we go. All right. Okay, everybody, so we're at 9:30 if we can make our way back to our seats. We have two items left on the agenda. Two items. No, 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 and we have closed. Alright, so we just gotta get a couple trustees back. Alright, oh, everybody's gonna see this is great. Okay, so we are reconvening at 9:32 PM. And we have moved on now to our action items. And the first item is 8.3.1, which is middle school programming in the DW Poppy and Aldergrove regions superintendent.
Thank you, I'm calling on Assistant Superintendent Woody Bradford to update us in terms of the transition committee that was formed in Poppy. And for the last couple of years, we certainly two years ago built up a lot of excitement around middle school periods throughout the district. And trying to transition to there in terms of Brookswood, Walnut Grove and Poppy. There's all kinds of things that need to be considered to do that. We did make a commitment to all three of those communities that as we went down this road, we were going to make sure that we did it first rate. We were not going to have anyone settle for something that they couldn't feel good about. And I know that, I commend Woody in terms of the work he has put in, in terms of meeting with all the different parties in Poppy. In terms of having conversations about what could potentially be the next steps forward. Certainly, we would appreciate more in terms of financial support in terms of this particular one. But we also know, as Brian and I've experienced, that so much of the attention is on Willoughby right now. That we continue to see this one is not maybe gonna get the financial support that we would really need. Given that, I know the community's wrestled with in terms of what to do next. So, what he's able to present at the finance facilities meeting in terms of giving a bit of an update there. So, his really intent here is trying to kind of determine maybe some next steps and wanting the board's support on that going forward. I'll turn it to Woody Bradford.
So, I'm gonna just back up and go through the story that we've been on the years together as a transition committee. Poppy region, when we had the board motion to transform Poppy Secondary to a middle secondary school. We formed a committee and that committee's job was to come together collectively and unpack this narrative and unpack this story. And you've heard a lot of themes tonight around this whole idea of story and narrative in terms of what's going on within our school district. And there is a story within the Poppy region around how we are going to create a middle school model within this region. So, the conversation has been rich for the past two years. And the transition committee has been made up of staff members from each of the schools in the region. PAC members from each of the schools, administrators and including principals and vice principals on that team. And it's been a collective group and we've had discussions around what it was gonna look like going forth. So, how we started this whole journey was basically, what were the hopes for this process to be successful? What did we want to hope for as a group that we were gonna be successful with in terms of implementing the middle school model at DW Poppy? And obviously, the focus is center stage was the students in terms of how we could focus on the students and the learning opportunities to those students with the community support in terms of what we needed to try and transition. And we use this as a launchpad for the conversations that we had to really build a team atmosphere as a group in terms of what we were doing around the conversations and listening respectfully to each other and having those conversations about what this process was gonna look like. So that we could go forward collectively together as a group. And we used the framework for enhancing student learning as really our roadmap in terms of how we were gonna try and do this. Knowing that our schools in our district use this as a framework to create experiences for kids each and every day. And as you heard in our presentation earlier this evening, this was really just, again, the map that we were using to unpack these decisions as we went forth. What we need to ensure as we went through it that we had really some guiding principles of how we were gonna operate as a team. Words like integrity, trust, listening to each other, valuing and honoring each of the members within the team to come to a place that we could go through the process respectfully and unpack the decisions in a way that we were gonna feel like everyone in the room had a voice. We were mandated with these responsibilities from the board in terms of what the board motions were. That we were to transition DW Poppy Secondary as a 6 to 12 or a middle secondary school, 6 to 8, 9 to 12. Looking specifically at the timeline, the facility changes that were needed and the educational programming that was gonna be happening within the middle school and the secondary school. Also to look at what was the impact on the K to 7 schools going K to 5 within the region? And Coglin Fundamental, how would they be part of the conversation? And what would be the impact on their school K to 5 as well? Knowing that Coglin has a connection with Poppy Secondary. Because as we've seen over the last few years, the Coglin students who are in grade 7, the majority of them end up going to Poppy into grade 8. So, when we use these board motions to ensure, these are the goals that we wanted to try and accomplish as we worked together over the past two years. And within these goals, we knew that the focus had to be on students. As the committee had already come together and shared, it had to have that focus on students and what we were doing and how we are creating those learning opportunities. Really, the emotional wellbeing of the students was an important piece. Obviously, the physical wellbeing of the students as we went through the process. And really trying to create through a middle school model, a vibrant and sustainable learning opportunities within the Poppy region for the students in the middle school and the secondary school. And as we arrived at these conversations and as we went through this process, there were pillars that actually came about through the conversations that we have. And they were clear guidelines of what the transition committee wanted to ensure that we were paying attention to as we navigated through the conversations of the middle school and the Poppy region. They were non-negotiables for our transition committee that had to be looked at as we were making decisions as we went 6 to 8 and 9 to 12. These non-negotiables was first of all, right out of the gate. And this was actually right from the beginning when we went through the consultation about the middle school process in the Poppy region. The safety of the students was front and center in terms of how we were gonna create the separation between the 6 to 8 and 9 to 12. And within that, we wanted all the students inside the building to ensure that we were operating with a 6 to 8 school and a 9 to 12 school. And some of the solutions we came up with was a split bell schedule where the 6, 7s and 8s would start earlier. Accessing the expirations areas of the secondary school. And then the secondary school students coming in later and then moving into the middle school or the middle school students moving from the expiration areas back into their own 6 to 8 area within the school. The educational improvements to the programming, wanted to ensure that the K to 5, 6 to 8, 9 to 12 was at the same standard or even higher than other areas in our district. We wanted to really focus on excellence in the Poppy region of what we were trying to accomplish in our K to 5, 6 to 8 model and 9 to 12 model. We wanted opportunities that were gonna reflect the same things that were going on at Yorkson, HD Stafford, and now Peter, you're coming on board and also Betty Gilbert. We wanted those experiences for our students and we knew that our 6s and 7s right now in the K to 7 schools, they were really looking for these experiences to happen. They were looking for the expirations in a middle school model. A lot of these students, they play hockey, they play soccer, they have fine arts performances with other students from around our district. And they hear about the things that are going on within their schools and they knew that that was something they wanted to experience as well. The facility itself, looking at a middle school inside the secondary school, we wanted to look at collaborative spaces which reflects a middle school model. The learning commons as being a learning hub that would intersect the middle school and secondary school as a common area of learning between the two sites. And then upgrade on the athletic facilities outside of the building. And the timeline we were looking at was a two to three year completion rate. And so, in going through those non-negotiables, whatever decisions we made, we knew that we had to filter through those, each one of those to ensure that everyone in the transition committee felt that we were going on the right step. Unpacking what we controlled at the time, going through, we looked at specific areas of interest to have conversations about. So, with inside the transition committee, we looked at specific educational programming that we knew that we wanted to see inside the middle school. And there were seven themes that emerged. And with inside the transition committee, people picked themes that they felt they were most interested in learning more about and trying to create for the 6 to 8 middle school and also what that was gonna look like going up into the middle school. So, athletics, arts, expirations, outdoor scheduling, playground. Those were all the different themes that emerged for people to sit and work together collaboratively to put in place as we went forth. And that's really what we worked on the first year together as a group. And sitting in the background of all our conversations was, in order for this to happen, we had to have financial support to get to a place of being able to convert the middle school, the facility, the way that we wanted it. And also to equip the parameters around safety of what we wanted with inside that middle school to actually enhance the educational program we were gonna have for the 6 to 8s and 9 to 12s. So, while we were doing the work on the educational programming piece, we knew that in the background, we were waiting for the financial piece to also kick in. And that was through the five-year capital plan in terms of requesting from the government, you saw it again tonight. An amount of money that we could put back into the building to be able to actually create the facility we needed to for a 6 to 8, 9 to 12. As the years have gone past, we've now made two requests for ministry funding. And we haven't yet received that money to be able to do the things that we want to be able to do in the current Poppy Secondary School. So, what we are learning as we go through this journey as a group is that the board motion continues to be out there. There will be a middle school in the Poppy region. That's what the community wants, that's what our board wants, that's the work we are given to do. The capital letter will go in again and request those funds, as you saw tonight, it's on the list of the five-year capital plan. There are capital projects, as again we heard tonight, that are impacting the Poppy region at this time. So, with the amount of population growth that we have on the slope and things that are going on there, those are all having an impact on the rate in terms of what we can do within the Poppy region. We know that Willoughby is now adding another middle school, Peter, you're coming on board. So, another school and within that school, 600 students going into it, a nice size for a middle school. Lots of expirations happening within the school that we know that the 6, 7, 8s in the Poppy region are looking for those opportunities. We know that in the Poppy Secondary School, there are currently 130 students roughly that come out of the Aldergrove region that end up at Poppy Secondary. And we know that the choice program, the fundamental program, Coglin, is, over the years, has been feeding into Poppy. We know that also at the secondary level, the programming within some of our schools, an example would be Ari Mountain. Because of the size of the school and the number of students in that school, that the programming opportunities at some of our secondary schools are different than some of our other secondary schools in terms of the amount of choices students get with inside their timetables because of the enrollment that is with inside the secondary school. And while this has been going on, we stayed true to the fact that the district continues to commit money into Poppy Secondary to modernize it. This year, we redid common areas within the building, we revitalized the gymnasium. We've upgraded different areas of the facility to try and modernize it in a way that the students and staff are continuing to see the money that we're putting into the school to actually move the building forward in a modernized way. So, that came to a point where this year, when we went through the processes of the transition committee, we knew that in order for this process to move forward, we needed that funding to happen. So, we didn't meet this year based on the fact we were waiting for the funding letter to come through. And obviously, we didn't receive the funding this year. So, what was the next step for the Poppy schools? What did we want to try and do next, knowing that we didn't have the funds to be able to do it? And we had to come back and talk to the transition committee. Prior to meeting with the transition committee, we met with the principals and vice principals in the region and went through those non-negotiables in terms of what the transition committee had asked us to do and try and come up with solutions of what are possible options for us to go forth with the transition committee to be able to get their feedback on. And it was really based on the fact that we knew the framework for enhancing student learning, we wanted that for all our schools within our district. So, the first option really was a waiting game. The first option was, let's just wait for the capital funding, let the letter go back in. And what the impact will be is that on the non-negotiables, the educational program will stay the way it is right now. The facility will probably stay the way it is and the timeline will just be extended in terms of when we can make those changes within the Poppy Secondary School. The other option was, maybe what we started off with the idea of having all the students inside the building and having kind of a closed area for the 6 to 8s, separated from the 9 to 12s with inside the current secondary school. Maybe we need to change that and present a different option. Option number two would be something like providing modular or portables onsite for the 6s or the 7s to be housed outside of the building or the 8s outside of the building. And what impact that would have on it? Again, going back to the non-negotiables around community and safety, the educational programming, will that really have the flavor of a middle school that we're trying to create within the Poppy region? What's the timeline for that? Well, the timeline, we can probably get portable sooner than later to be able to put on there. But we would have to find out from facilities and maintenance and finance in terms of how we were gonna do that. And then the transportation piece of going back and looking at that split schedule, what does it mean for grade 6, 7s and 8s to be on a bus earlier than 9s to 12? And what would that, what impact would that have on their own success within the middle school model? And then, as we looked at those options as principals and vice principals, we also looked at, is this problem really an opportunity disguised in terms of asking the transition committee for feedback on a third option for their consideration? And the third option was to look at Poppy as a standalone middle school and ACSS Secondary as the feeder secondary school from the middle school. So, the impact on that in terms of the considerations was the transportation between the Poppy region and the Aldergrove region. The catchment areas such as Fort Langley and the impact it would have on Coglin. And then the third one was the emotional connection. Everyone understands and everyone understood in the room that there's been a tradition of Poppy for a long time of being a secondary school. No one counts that out as an important part of this conversation. And that's why the conversation is key to the relationship to have success in what we're gonna do moving forward. But the principals and vice principals thought, if we do not present this to the transition committee, we're not honoring the work that we've done the last few years around what they expect around the non-negotiables. And this is an idea, really what we're seeking from the transition committee was, is this an idea even for consideration? And when we unpacked this decision as a group through group discussions that they had at each of their tables, there was obviously, there is people in the room that were very positive in terms of they could see how this would impact the success rates of 6 to 8 and 9 to 12. And there's obviously some people that had some questions about what this was gonna actually look like for it to be successful. So, it was really just a conversation about, is this anything that we would consider as an opportunity within the Poppy region? So, I hit pause there because at the same time this conversation was going on, I spent the last probably year, year and a half with the Aldergrove principals and vice principals around a same sort of story in terms of educational opportunities in another region that sits right beside the Poppy region. And that's in Aldergrove in terms of what goes on within the Aldergrove region about how we support the students around educational programming. And how do we make sure that those students in that region are also getting the very best? And so, when we think about the Poppy region, we think about the Aldergrove region. How do those students, K to 12 within that region, get the same experiences that we know that other students in our district are getting right now? And the moral imperative is that, as the assistant superintendent for that region, I didn't feel like it was something where I was willing to wait 15 or 20 years for that moral imperative to actually be decided. Because the heart of what we do in this district is built around community and built around relationships. So, to have the courage to go and say to the Aldergrove community, what do we need to do to make this happen? Was gonna be a community conversation that needed to happen to move that region forward. So, we met together as principals and vice principals for the last year and discussed some of the different opportunities that were presented and what sort of things we needed to do around educational programming, around scheduling. And really about, what's the narrative of Aldergrove? Like, how do we celebrate all this, the great things that are going on in Aldergrove that showcases the incredible ability of the students within the region? The incredible effort of the community to get behind each of the schools? And the incredible work of the staff within each of the schools that are really working with the students to be successful in every area of those students' areas of passion? So, as we made the connections, we have conversations, we really wanted to unclosen't just that narrative in terms of what we're doing in the Poppy within the Aldergrove region and really looking at what we could do over the next little bit to take a look at focusing on the Aldergrove region with the district vision, mission and values. What alignment we could do within the region? How we can make it sustainable and really create opportunities that were a legacy for the future going forth? We knew though, that there was again, something that was holding us back in terms of those educational opportunities. And just as we have growth in areas like Willoughby and we have secondary schools that are operating at a number that allows those programs to happen fluidly within it, it's always a challenge in terms of scheduling. Fluidly within it, it's always a challenge in terms of scheduling those educational programs when your enrollment isn't at the same level as other areas. So we looked at the enrollment trends over the last uh few years in terms of what was going and you can see. That it was very static, wasn't changing very much, it was fluctuating a little bit, but there wasn't a lot of growth and we said, okay, this is the past. What does the future look like? And the future looked relatively the same in terms of where we are going over the next few years. And so we knew we really had to dig into the work that we were gonna do. And the work being that this was gonna be hard work. This was not gonna be something that was gonna happen. Uh uh without just really digging in in terms of what sort of opportunities we're gonna, we're gonna create together as a group. With the Aldergrove principals and vice principals and coming up ideas of what, what we can do around programming, athletics, arts, trades to really. Uh boost those experiences for kids to think outside of the box because at the same time we were having this conversation, we knew that there are other programs within the district. That were being able to meet those needs and didn't have the same barriers that were in front of what Aldergrove was facing in terms of growth and enrollment. So again, just like the Poppy narrative, we are looking at educational programming, facilities. And the enrollment within the region to make it a robust experience for kids to enjoy K to twelve within the region. So again, taking a look at the um Aldergrove uh Aldergrove community and what's going on there, really option number one is. We continue to stay the same and we continue to try and be uh in the place we are now of trying to create excellence every opportunity we can. And we've got incredible people each day doing that in each one of our schools, our two elementary schools, our middle school and our secondary school. And again, looking at what sort of programs are gonna be impacted by that and the facility itself. Betty Gilbert and ACSS sit on the same campus together, but there are two buildings that are separated from each other and they share uh the building. To try and accommodate the programming that needs to happen for those students. So they work together collaboratively to try and schedule things so the programming happens for those students. And again, this is where the narrative and the train tracks cross and intersect with each other. Because is this an opportunity when you have really the same sort of challenges? Next door going on with what we're talking about in the Poppy region about what we want as non-negotiables happening right in the Aldergrove region? And presenting to the Aldergrove region the same experience in terms of Poppy being the middle, ACSS being the secondary. With an enhancement to the facility, now you have a middle school that reflects the same middle school as a Peter Yurt, H. Stafford, um and Yorkson. Uh with the ability to, within that middle school, the educational programming along with um the secondary school. And the alignment between the middle school and secondary programs, just like we have in other areas of our district. Um and the considerations is just balancing the K to five schools, what would happen in each of the areas. And again, the busing between the two regions and then also the considerations with staffing, what would happen at Aldergrove, uh Poppy and Betty Gilbert going forth. So I come here sharing you the Poppy narrative about what's going on in the middle school region. And I also share with you a narrative that is right next door to Poppy in terms of the community in Aldergrove. That is sharing the same sort of experiences and it's not from a lack of effort, it's not from a lack of work. It's just the circumstances right now that are facing those communities in terms of what we need to try and do to try and problem solve thinking through it. So. As I shared the Poppy story, I also connected with the Aldergrove community. Because one of the things that I did not wanna have happen is come out of the Poppy Transition Committee. That we were talking about another region and them not being involved in that conversation. So after I met with the Poppy Transition Committee, I then uh asked the principals to create the same transition committee with members from staff and parents. Uh principals and vice principals in the region in Aldergrove to share with them this narrative about what's going in Aldergrove and what's happening in Poppy. So trying to make sure the communication was transparent in both regions uh so that um the community would know what was going on as we went down this path together. Coming back to present to all of you at Facilities and Finance and now we arrived here together at a public board meeting. And so hearing uh the presentation, reading the report. I'm asking for you to now think about what are the next steps for us as we go forth with this in the Poppy region around the middle school? And looking uh for uh the board to give me direction in terms of what I would do next and. Uh a board motion that's been put forth and in your uh board for you to uh in your uh board package, where you consider that. District staff commence a consultation process with the parents and staff of the DW Poppy and Aldergrove regions. Uh regarding the transition of DW Pop to a standalone middle school and Aldergrove Secondary as the second secondary feeder school. And report back to the Board of Education at the regular meeting in December two thousand nineteen with recommended next steps. And obviously that process being that giving uh staff the opportunity to go back into each one. Of the the feeder schools into the middle school, so in each of the elementary schools within the region, the secondary schools. And Betty Gilbert, the middle school and share with them this narrative and this story. And listen as we've done the whole time with the transition committee from the the beginning when we started this consultation process. Around listening to what feedback we get from the uh from the community and then coming back and taking that commu- uh that that feedback. Sharing it with the transition committee and the transition committee then sharing their direction. And me coming back and presenting that to you, to the board for your consideration.
Okay, thank you very much for the report. So we do have two motions. So the first one is to receive the report. So um what we'll start off with is a motion that the Board of Education receives the report on middle school programming. In the DW Poppy and Aldergrove regions for as presented, so moved by Vice Chair Coburn, Trustee Ward. So we'll start off with uh questions um and any comments on this, uh trustee Todd?
Uh let's get it. Thank you, thank you for your very thorough report, the rationale. And uh this is a classic example of being bold and innovative in thinking too because. Uh I don't think anyone here at the table kinda thought that we might come to this point. Uh and it certainly is a courageous uh proposal that's before the board tonight. When you talk about excellence and. I'm I'm wanting maybe to explain a little bit in terms of cohorts at the high school, just the, explain how. It it's it's that much easier or maybe do a little rationale behind why, why we would need a bigger high school to be more effective for programming for the students.
So uh at a secondary school in terms of uh the number of blocks you can offer in a certain area. So if a student wants to take band or wants to take something in the arts and it's only in certain areas of the timetable, they can't. Necessarily get their schedule to work like that. Uh whereas in another secondary school, they may have multiple blocks, they'd be able to choose and be able to use their timetable effectively. Also advanced placement courses in terms of higher level classes, the number of students that go into that. With a greater population, be able to populate those classes for that volume to actually happen for those students to take those courses. Again, increasing the number of those courses and opportunities for those kids to take those courses with inside their timetable.
Uh thank you. So trustee Ross, I have a trustee Wilson first. So if you're okay with uh clearing out your microphone, it will be trustee Wilson and then trustee Ross.
Oh, okay, got it. Um so yeah, I have a quick question and then a couple of comments. I just was wondering, I read through the report and it was very informative. But can you just give me a a number, like a rough number? How many members of the transition committee or people? Were actually in attendance when the new option, um the standalone option was presented to the transition committee?
So the actual numbers that were in the room?
Yeah.
So there was a representation for every school. So there was a parent, so a parent from Fort Langley, a parent from Coglin. Uh a parent from Wicks, uh North Otter, Peterson. Um there's staff members from each of those schools as well. So teachers from each of the schools and then principals or vice principals from the schools. Yeah, so.
Okay, and so um I do wanna just disclose that I have a son that attends DW Poppy, so I wanna be very. Transparent and I'm not trying to hide that from anybody. I'm happy to be a member of the board and that's just, you know, how things have happened. Um I've also experienced, like I've told the board, um DW or Stafford and. LSS amalgamating and was a staff member of LSS through that period and saw the impacts it had on students and staff. So I have that experience in my mind. I wanna be sure we're being mindful to the Fort Langley community. Cause I noticed in some of the um the motion and the letter that you have going out that we don't really um. We keep calling it the DW Poppy region and the Aldergrove region. I think maybe we need to refer to it as family of schools or catchments so that. You know, their region feels included because they are in in those family of schools. So I just wanna be mindful that we are considering them all the time. And uh I wanna make sure that the community knows and hopefully our viewers are listening that this is really their opportunity. To come out and say what they wanna say on this idea and make sure that their voices are heard. And then I will have a few um amendments that I'm gonna propose to the motion when we get to that.
Okay, thank you. So what we'll do is we'll receive this report. And then um we'll we'll move this motion and then go into a discussion of that part. So the. Motion or the motion to receive the report has been moved and seconded. So all those in favor of receiving the report? Okay, so now the motion that's been recommended for us to discuss now. Is that district staff commence a consultation process with parents and staff in the DW Poppy and Aldergrove regions. Regarding the transition of DW Poppy to a standalone middle school and Aldergrove Secondary as the secondary feeder school. And report back to the Board of Education at their regular meeting in December of two thousand and nineteen with recommended next steps. So could I get a mover for that motion? So it's moved by trustee Ross, seconded by Vice Chair Coburn. Um so we will, I guess, does the mover wanna speak first or? Okay, so trustee Ross and then just please indicate if.
So uh the new high school, Aldergrove, it's not a new high school, I realize, but the the larger one. What will be the numbers in that school with the new configuration as you're recommending here? How many kids will be in that?
Eleven hundred.
About eleven hundred, okay, which is significant. And uh uh as Mr. Pusick is here and uh I think he's the principal of that school, I think. Are you at that school?
I was.
Oh, you were, okay. Um I was, I I'm just really mindful that small schools are really tough to manage. And as far as giving kids options, I I mean, I just really applaud you guys for, you know, struggling with those small numbers and making it work. Um I applaud you for that. But eleven hundred would really make it a lot easier and a lot more exciting for kids too and and teachers for that matter. Uh so I I really think this is a really good idea. I I'm mindful also, I I just marvel at, you know, how wisdom comes slowly to us. Um when we did the same situation, we did consultations with regards to what we were doing in uh in the Willoughby area. Um you know, we'd never thought of making RE Mountain into a middle school, never, the idea never occurred to us. And it was one of our custodians that came up with the idea and made the suggestion to us and it just changed everything and changed our thinking. And so I really welcome this uh uh this and and applaud you for it as well. I think I think this is outstanding. I think it's real poss- possibilities here for a win, so thank you.
Okay, so I have a trustee Ward next on speaker's list and then I see trustee Todd has indicated he'd like to be on next.
Thoughts just with respect to the motion, I like the idea of going through this process and um. He said preliminary feedback from the transition committee was to move forward with option three. However, obviously that doesn't commit us. Uh my concern is just uh the last few words of the motion. Uh um with recommended next step, so it kinda sounds presumptive to me. That we are moving along those lines as if we're committed to option number three. So my my consideration would be to adjust the language to. Make it seem less like it's committed in that direction.
All right, so trustee Ward, I hear some concern perhaps that the motion seems a bit presumptive. So if you added in, you know, possible transition or something like that, would that be something you'd wanna move or do you have some language already written out? I did see that a trustee Wilson does maybe have an amendment to the motion. Um so if uh trustee Todd was was willing to. Let um himself step away and then trustee Todd, if you'd be willing to perhaps um hear trustee Wilson's proposed amendment, then I would. I can circle back to both of you right after that. Trustee Wilson.
Okay, um I have that same feeling, so I um have written out an amendment. I also had um a bit of a. A thing just with my earlier comment about calling it a family of schools instead of the word region on there, just because it makes it seem like then we include Fort Langley. So my, I'd like to propose the following amendment that the motion read. That the district staff commence a consultation process with the parents and staff in the DW Poppy. And Aldergrove Families of Schools and Coglin Fundamental Elementary regarding the three options presented to the transition committee. And report back to the Board of Education at their regular meeting in the December two thousand and nineteen with the feedback they receive and recommended next steps.
So we have a an amendment, um and then uh we would need a second here. Uh so trustee Todd is on there. So now we would be speaking only to the amendment. And then uh the next step would be for us to prove the amendment if if that's what we like, then we would go back to debating the main motion. So just on the amendment, are there any speakers to the amendment? Trustee Wilson, would you like to speak to your amendment?
Yeah, so I've made three sort of changes, the one about re- receiving feedback besides the recommended next steps. And the region changing to the family of schools, but also that we present the um. The communities with the three options that were given to the transition committee because there was only fifteen people that really. Decided on that third option to go forward and I believe that the. The direction the board gave originally was to go out and do the transition committee looking at having it be a six to twelve middle high. So this is a really new concept and I feel like just going out immediately with just that one option is a little too much too fast. So for my comfort, I'd like to see the three options go forward in the consultation.
Any other speakers to the amendment? Trustee Todd and then trustee Ward and then Vice Chair Coburn.
So uh. Thank you. Um so yeah, I I speak in in favor of the amendment. I I did have conversations because I know many people in the Aldergrove community, uh parents there. And um it was conversa- their their daughter had just graduated and uh. They understood a lot of the rationale around like improving the the experience for high school. Cause they said it was frustrating, their daughter had one choice in in senior math and that was it. There was one choice, there was no three choices. It was frustrating and all. And but I talked about the thing and they said, well, maybe that's a solution. But there might be other solutions out there. And I I think if we're gonna start a a consultation, we. We should start a consultation with the ability to change our mind. And and I think we we're learning from our mistakes and some might say we're learning at consultation. You have to be willing to listen and listen to our 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 education public and 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 they. Do an eloquent job of changing or or changing our mind or or perhaps producing new one. Somebody else said right away, they said, well, it's easy, just do six to twelve for both Aldergrove and DW Poppy. That's what they threw out right away and I went, oh. I hadn't even thought about that. So who knows what may may uh come up? So I speak in favor of this and I I think that the motion originally as it was worded was maybe a little bit uh prescriptive or presumptive and. And and I wanna go in with probably a neutral stance and and present these options. And then from that point, we'll hear what the community, the communities, and there are several, what they want. And that's where I'd sooner we go.
So I have trustee uh Ward and then I have Vice Chair Coburn.
Okay, so I think a word that I would recommend changing possibly would be instead of recommended. And maybe this is too soft of a word, but possible next steps because to your point, I I think it's worthwhile leaving it wide open. We are getting considerations uh from a group, but um just we, just because we've modeled this uh middle school, well, this middle school model is. Done well elsewhere, uh we wanna continue with this kinda open-minded mindset. I've seen it before where we've um. Another place that I've worked, uh you have a pilot project, but the pilot project is already presumed to be successful before it even launches. So um uh I like to have that open mind where you can actually make adjustments midstream.
I was just gonna say, I believe we have possible earlier on, can you re- re-read the? Can you re- read the the amendment? I'm just trying to figure out if there needs to be an amendment to the amendment. Can you just? Pardon me?
I didn't have it.
Okay. All right. So although there's no real concept of friendly amendments, amazingly, at ten, twelve PM, if everybody nods their head, we could have a friendly amendment.
We're friendly.
So that's called a after ten PM amendment. So we're so there'll be an additional possible in there if there are no objections. Okay, so and then we have, do you have any further comments on that? No? All right, so Vice Chair Coburn.
Yeah, I'm supportive of the amendment and I like open mindedness, right? So you don't know what you don't know until you go and find out what you don't know. And I have no problem with the word recommended. It doesn't bother me. That's what we have staff to do is to make recommendations. So if we're too gentle with our language, we're stripping them of their function. And I'm really mindful of that because that's just something that I'm concerned with. And to Trustee Wilson through the chair, you you and Curious made a deliberate point of including Fort Langley and then putting them under the umbrella of communities of school. But then you've put in Coglin in the motion as a standalone. So I'm wondering why, what the rationale is for that? Because then if we just say, oh, family of schools, then we've made an inclusive umbrella for everybody because then the other schools might wonder why Coglin's getting special treatment. And that's just my, it does, it's not going to die for me on that though.
So I, Trustee Wilson, are you able to answer Mr. Coburn's question?
Yeah, it's just because Coglin doesn't have a catchment because it's a school of choice. So it doesn't fall into the family of schools. So it's always referred to as a standalone.
All right, any anything else? No? All right, so I we have this amendment to the motion. I just wanted to say in with the amendment, I am I'm supportive of it mostly because we've worked very hard over the last number of years to demonstrate as a board our commitment to going out in a consultation and be willing to have, as Trustee Todd said, our minds changed. So examples of that include the original consultation with LSS wasn't, even the option that that went forward wasn't even one of the original options. The calendar consultation, the district went out and it was an just exhaustive consultation. And at the end, the board didn't didn't proceed with that. There's times where, you know, we have gone on consultations and and it was, as it went out on the consultation, we approved it. So the board has worked so hard over the last number of years. In the years that I've been on the board, I've seen a a pattern of really meaningful consultation where even if maybe the intent that we set out in wasn't approved or or, you know, undertaken, we've learned something from that and applied it to the next one. So I am proud of the consultation. I'm I'm not opposed to the possible next steps, though I do agree with Vice Chair Coburn. I'm concerned about sending a message that we don't want a recommendation back because that's what we want. We want to make decisions based on the recommendation. The board may not decide to move forward. But when staff comes back, I want to hear what you recommend out of that. Now, if other information comes forward that sways our mind, that's okay. But I'd like you to stand up there and defend why you're recommending that. It's very important because we need to make informed decisions, right? So I'm supportive of it. I would never want the community to feel as though we weren't going in with a true consultation where we want to hear from the the community. So I think that the amendment is important because once something leaves this table and goes out, we can't control how people perceive what they read. And it's important that what's there is our intent. So I support it. So do we have any other speakers to the amendment? Okay, all those in favor of the amendment? Okay, the amendment's carried. So we're now going to go back to the main motion, which contains the the amendments that Trustee Wilson put forward. And I'm just wondering if we have any other speakers to the motion now as amended? All right, so that has been moved and seconded, so all those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you, Assistant Superintendent. Okay, so we just need to go back because in my excitement of taking a recess, because my legs had fallen asleep, we forgot that, or I forgot, that we need to actually receive the superintendent's information item related to the truth and reconciliation update. So I was wondering if I could please get a mover to receive the report. Moved by Vice Chair Coburn, seconded by Trustee Todd. Any comments or other questions on receiving it? No, all those in favor? Okay, thank you. Wow, we are on eight point three point two now, which is a communications plan, two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-two. Thank you to everybody who's stuck with us so far. This is only another couple hours, right?
No, ten minutes.
Okay, just checking. We have you slotted down here. My cheat note says one hour and thirty-five minutes. Thanks again for having me. I will say that my presentation will be short simply because Mr. Bradford stole the show with his company and showing all the cool videos that the communications team has done. Did I say that publicly? It's a team effort. And when I say team, it's just not, and I love you too. Anthony, by all means, my staff member. I wanted him to be here to to endure the four, five hours that we've been here just so that we can acknowledge that we are a small, mighty team and we've worked really hard in the last couple of months to really complete the things in this communications plan, which I'll go through. But acknowledge him, but acknowledge everyone else, teachers, all staff, school trustees who are out in the community at different events where I may not be at, but they're communicating to me what's happening. So thank you so much. So as you know, most of the trustees, you have seen the communications plan. This has been been in the works for the last couple of months and you've seen it. And I will talk about the the motion at the end. But really, this is for me just to to cover the highlights. I won't go through the whole thing. But first and foremost are the five main objectives. And then along these objectives, there's about seventy-five different strategies. Of course, I won't go through all of them. But again, I think you heard throughout this whole last four years that celebrating our story is so crucial on so many levels. I think whether it's teachers or students, when you see yourself or people like yourself, whether it's in the newspaper or in our social media channels or our school district websites, it that that role model and that seeing yourself really is empowering and and enables you to, you know, continue on our educational journey. Enhancing our brand is also really important. You know, we want to protect ourselves when when bad things happen. But of course, we want to focus on the good, promoting safety in our schools and communicating things when emergencies and different crises come up because they do come up and the key here is for us to be ready to communicate those things. Strengthening our relationships is is extremely important, both for internal audiences as well as external audiences. Parents are a huge audience, but internally, you know, dealing with partner groups, that is a strong relationship that we want to continue building on. And lastly, building our capacity. We all know, especially, you know, educational sector, that, you know, we don't have a lot, all the money in the world. So really, it is important to for the communication staff to share best practices, whether it's with teachers or admins or even parents, to give them the tools and knowledge so that they can do X, Y, and Z to help further their children's education. So based on, this was presented to partner groups and various different groups for feedback. The big changes that I've made are really the the last half. Recommendations that I I've made include increasing opportunities for partner groups to engage with the Board of Education. I've also recommended that I attend regular meetings with partner groups as well just so that I can get a pulse on, you know, what people are thinking and feeling separate from from the board as well. As well as, because I'm out in the community, to also have regular meetings with City of Langley, Township of Langley and RCMP Communication Staff, especially in the event of of an emergency. It's really important that we're all on the same page. On that note, I actually have a emergency officer information meeting tomorrow just to go to show that I am constantly in connection with all those different community groups. So I want to talk about some of the highlights. And obviously, there's so many different ways that we communicate with all our audiences. Of course, the frontline staff like teachers and and principals, they they cover that piece. But when it comes to other channels like our websites, social media, that's where, you know, our team comes in. And I just want to highlight social media and why I'm talking about it because, well, it's it's what a lot of parents and a lot of students are are using these days. And at the same time, the metrics are there instantly. I like anecdotal evidence because everyone loves telling stories. But at the same time, here are the numbers. This is the proof that people are engaged. In the last four months since I've started in February, we've increased a thousand followers on Facebook. We've doubled our Instagram followers. And for those that don't know Instagram, that's what the teachers and the young kids are using these days, right? So that's an important piece to try to engage our young learners. And it's not just a numbers game though because what you don't see, but I see, because I'm also addicted to social media, is the comments and the likes and all the engaged people that we have on our channels. I read all the comments and it really gets me going when I'll post something and instantly we'll have someone tag their family members, say, oh, hey, look at little Johnny doing this or that, you know? So it's really nice to see that there is like instant gratification, I guess, for me, but also for for the the families and the parents who are watching these cool videos and photos. But it's not just fun stories, it's also news you can use and information that's helpful. So for example, you know, we did a a month ago, we did a, oh, you better learn how to access my ed BC and if you don't know how, here's where you can go for help. After that was posted, the next two days after, we had twenty, twenty people who signed up for help. So I know that I can't say for sure that I'm directly related to that, but there is, it's fair to say that there is a connection, right? So social media is a very strong tool and I think we will continue with that moving forward. So on to the videos that we've done, which is another key piece. Marketing wise, videos always get three times, if not more, engagement than just a static photo. I mean, you saw from Mr. Bradford's presentation that, yeah, the videos really wowed the crowd, right? So I think even with our own audiences, we want to do that, right? Because, you know, you think it's only a one minute video, but it's telling a story. It's it's telling a story, but it's also, you know, showing what we're doing in addition to making people feel good. I think in the last little bit, you know, I hear positive feedback from everyone. Everyone's been so supportive. And what they tell me is that they really feel a sense of community through what they're seeing. And it could be a teacher, it could be a trustee. I mean, even with myself, when I do these things, I'm out in the field with students for an hour doing a video about them and I feel so impacted by it. And I know they do too, that when I see them again, they're like, oh, it's so nice to see you, you know? So it really is that that building connection, which I think is really important and that sense of belonging. So some of the cool videos, the RE Mountain Celebration and the LSS one hundred and tenth anniversary, if you went there, you knew it was a success because the they were packed. Tons of people, I don't even know where they came from. We did a video and eleven thousand views for each, right? And the video is not the reason why people showed up, but I think it helps in, you know, building that momentum, getting people excited and feeling connected to this event. You know, we've highlighted career ed programs. The Aboriginal Achievement Awards video that you saw also had four thousand views. And it really is, these aren't just videos that are being seen by our 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 people. These are things that are being shared in the dozens to dozens of people and it's really getting exposure outside of just Langley as well. So moving on to media, I'll just highlight a few great things. I think if Superintendent Gord Stewart asked me before I had this job, oh, can you get us on the front page of the newspaper, the province? I would have said, yeah, right, impossible. Because honestly, I think it's impossible. But we did that, so it's not impossible. So I I feel I feel a little bit under pressure because I think I've set the bar really high and I'm really scared to see what's going to happen next year because I don't think that's something you can accomplish all the time, every year. But certainly, it's not because of my doing. It really is because of the students and the teachers and their stories. I'm just the messenger who's sharing this message. It's truly them that's doing the work. So as you see on the screen and and the front page story here is Asher Mu who's a student at LSS. He's in grade eleven, but he's hustled and worked so hard academically to finish school a year early because he's accepted a scholarship to play soccer at TWU. And the kicker is that he's a a former Karen refugee student. So these are inspirational stories. I can't even imagine what, you know, life is like, you know, or was like for for someone like him. But to 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 have that, and and I guess the the the, what's it called? I'm in the news and I can't remember. The headline says role model and I think that is really important. And really, his story exemplifies our core values. And I think it's really important and so glad that he was highlighted. Other media highlights, I mean, there's so many, but I'll just focus on just one more. The Idea X winners, so courageous. I I knew that CTV's morning show was interested in them and I said, okay, yeah, I'll I'll take them there if you if you want to hear from them. And so we went there early morning, six, I think it was like six, ten AM. We had to like leave Langley and go and and they got a crash course in PR boot camp from me and they did a fabulous job. And again, that's the extended enhanced learning. Of course, the Idea X challenge itself was amazing. But to then get that real world experience of, hey, you're going to do a a media interview like tomorrow, you know, and and they prepped for that and they were great. And and they're on the, they were on the front cover of the presentation. So those are just amazing stories that I can't wait to continue on promoting. Yeah, so that's it for that. So I'm really excited with this plan. It's it's very ambitious, it's a lot. I think that with my team, Tony, as well as everyone's support, I think we can achieve all these strategies over a four-year period. Of course, I highlighted all the positive stuff, but I know that, you know, there's always going to be some negative stuff along the way. But I, yes, I think we'll be prepared to to handle that when it comes. So, yeah. Wow, so you haven't been here for very long, have you slapped? Yes, yes, like you, I I don't think you've slapped since you started here, have you? So we do have a motion which we'll get on the floor and then I'll open up for a speaker's list. So the motion that we have is that the Board of Education approves the communications plan for two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-two as presented. So moved by Vice Chair Coburn, seconded by Trustee Todd. Trustee Todd?
Once again, thank you. I I don't really have, I have a tongue in cheek question about how can you get our viewership up?
My, I don't know if that's possible. No, 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 no. So but my alternative plan though is parents, fam, the community should be engaged in what we do, but they don't have to be engaged by logging in and watching for four hours. So in my plan, it's to provide them with snippets of what we're doing. So that could be, you know, Megan doing a a one minute wrap up of what we do every month or or sorry, Board Chair, Madam Board Chair, or 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 Gord doing that. There's, so so a lot of what I do is strategic. Like these aren't just one minute videos that we just, oh, let's just do a video here and a video there. Like there's a lot. lot of thought put into it and what the message should be coming out, what is, who's speaking, what the person who's speaking looks like, because especially as a person of color, that matters to me, diversity, inclusion, what they're saying, how we package the story for everyone to see, that's all very important. So, all I'm saying is, what we do here in the boardroom is super important, but how we package it up for the viewers and for the audience, the method can be different, it doesn't have to be through this way. It could be infographics saying, "Oh, hey, this happened," like, there's so many things that came out of Mike Pugh's presentation that I can't wait to just make into infographics to teach our people, our viewer, or our viewers, our audiences about all these cool things that we're doing in Aboriginal education that I, I'm blown away by that I've learned, right? So, it doesn't have to be, okay, come and sit to the, it's not the answer you want to hear, but it's my strategy to how we can engage our community.
Trustee Todd, we did, I received a text, we did max out at 12 viewers tonight, which is, which is really good. No, no, this is, this is large.
I will say that budget banter with Brian will definitely increase our viewership.
Yes, it's for Brian. Okay, so, thank you, any other speakers on this?
What a fantastic communications plan, and the increase in the coverage that you've provided is significant, and we appreciate the good news stories being shared and the ability to engage in, and for Trustee Todd's benefit, the time when we get viewers is usually when we're doing something the community doesn't like, so we'll take this as a yay. So, anytime we've had a lot of people attend something, it's usually been, you know, not for happy circumstances, so I'll stick with our 12 viewers at home. Trustee Ross?
You know, I just took a break, and I looked at the newspaper articles, they're posted outside, and that is a lot of your work, and I just want to applaud you and your team for doing that, it just, once again, just shows how neat this school district is, so I so much appreciate what you're doing.
Great, so thank you. So, the motion that we have on the floor right now is that the Board of Education approves the communications plan for 2019 to 2022 as presented, we have a mover and a seconder on that, so all those in favor. Motion is carried, thank you again for all of your hard work. So, is there, we are on to new business, is there any other new business tonight? Trustee Wilson?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that has to do with the communications plan, so I move that the Ad Hoc Communication Committee become a regular standing committee.
Is there a second here for that motion? Second by Vice Chair Coburn, okay, would you like to?
Yes, so, as we've saw in Jo Abishire's full report, when she refers to Section 4, the strengthening our relationships, there was a bullet of increasing opportunities for partner groups to engage with the Board of Education in relation to communications, and the Ad Hoc Committee, when it was created last year, was created, I believe, in part to lessen the need for the different partner groups to use the delegation process to communicate with our board, and so we wanted to open those avenues of communication, and I know the feedback from at least two of the partner groups that came to the entire board, both mentioned that they would like a standing committee instead of it to be ad hoc, so I hope that everybody will support this motion.
All right, any other speakers on that? For sure, all right, all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, Trustee Ross opposed, but that, the motion is carried, thank you, Trustee Wilson. All right, is there any other new business? No? All right, so now we are on to trustee comments, just before we go to the trustee comments, I just wanted to acknowledge Wendy Cook and Charlotte Major who, I believe, has left for the evening. This, I believe, is your last meeting, a board meeting as presidents of the organizations. I just wanted to say that, you know, we, as a board, we've had such a wonderful time building a relationship with you and seeing you every board meeting and your thoughtful delegations and your hard work to increase relationships with our partner groups, both of your voices, we're really looking forward to working with your counterparts, but we are really going to miss you at the table. We want to thank you for the important role that you have played over the years in your organizations, and wish you well on your next chapter, but we do, we will miss you, and we just wanted to say thank you for everything you've done for our district, you will be missed, so. We'll make sure to get that off to Charlotte, also we'll email her, but thank you very much. I also was quite remiss at the beginning when we did introductions, I didn't say hello and introduce Anthony, so thank you for being here tonight, you're always behind the camera, and sometimes I don't see you because you're in there taking these wonderful photos, so thank you for sticking with us tonight. So, trustee comments, I will start at my far left with Trustee Wilson today.
Thank you, and I was also going to recognize the union leaders that we have leaving us, and I see Charlotte has left already, she couldn't wait till their time was up, she had to go. So, we appreciate everything that you do in your roles, and sometimes it can be a very thankless job, but, you know, there's some self-reward there, and the board appreciates all that you've done, so thank you for your service to your members.
Thank you, Trustee Wilson, Trustee Ross?
So, I just would like to make a few comments about our esteemed colleagues on the other side as well. I always tell the board, and they always, they tolerate me, and I always say that we're the best board ever, and that's the goal for this four-year term, we'll be the best board ever, but the only way we can be the best board ever is if we have the best unions ever. Strong unions make us strong, and if we're strong and you're not, that's not healthy, it's not good, and it's not good for the system. We need and we welcome and we applaud the work that you're doing, it's so necessary. And, you know, I always think that, you know, we're a good board, we really do work well, we really mean the best with our employee groups and stuff like that, but we couldn't do it without you, and we really do need you, and so I really do, you know, I, I'm sort of repeating myself because I really want to get this message across, but I just think the work that you do is so incredibly important. I mean, Principals and Vice Principal Association as well, they bring something to the table that is so important as well, and I'm just, you know, having a strong administrative team is good only if you have a strong employee team, and so I thank you for bringing that.
Thank you, Trustee Ross, and Trustee Todd?
Well, I'll keep with the trend here, of course, thank you for your advocacy, for the strength you brought to your positions. Every now and then, we sting a little bit when we may get a letter, or we go, "Oh, we hadn't considered that," and then many times it was just, it often is, "Oh, we hadn't considered that viewpoint," so thanks for holding up a light and the consideration and advocating for your groups. We know that, you know, the true strength of a union is how they treat all their members and the equal voice you bring, and the passion both of you have brought for your unions has been tremendous, I do appreciate that. I also want to talk a little bit about, it's my favorite season of the year, it's grad season, and so, in education, there's, I guess, well, you know, now we've got kindergarten grad, we've got like elementary grad, and we have middle school grad, and there's a lot of grad going on, but there's nothing quite so transformative and symbolic in many ways as when, you know, our graduates walk across that stage and they feel that instant moment of success, and congratulations to our graduates, I wish them all well, and I'll be at another one tomorrow night. I was kind of concerned because as the time wore on tonight, I thought we would be here on my birthday, but we might get out a little early, thank you.
Trustee Ward, it's your turn.
Oh, boy, I thought we were going this route here. Yeah, I just reflect on what a great year, just some of the things that came out of, I mean, over the course of the year, being a new trustee, I've seen a lot of excellent presentations, obviously, very impressed with staff at all levels, I mean, we've got fantastic janitorial staff, all the way up to top administrators, teachers who, if anybody had the chance, I did go to the LSS reunion, it was fantastic, and just to see people who've been content in being in our community for so many years, as far as community of schools and state teachers for many, many years, this is a community, and we, Langley is, has something special. A lot of other communities, I know that they have what they have, but as somebody was raised in Langley and very proud to be on the board here, we have a lot of really good things going on, so some things that are reflected on is the fantastic presentations, obviously, we have great athletics programs and others, and I just wanted to comment on what, and also thank you to the union staff, and thank you Wendy as well, but just to our grads out there, not that those are 12 students who are watching, but it is a fantastic time of the year, and this is why we're here, we're here to advance people from K to 12, and then to pass them on and put them in a positive stand as they go off in their adult years, so just congratulations to all the grads, and thank you.
Vice Chair Coburn? So, like, an hour and 17 minutes till your birthday? I think I can do it. Challenge accepted, so happy June, happy year-end, happy graduation, happy first year to the new trustees. I really like you, Wendy, I do, and I really enjoyed the dynamic between your, the people you represent and this board, and Charlotte as well, I find you extremely collaborative, best interests of everybody, especially the children, and the conversations that I've had with you around, you know, what we need to do as educators, and I have a tremendous amount of respect for you, and I'm actually quite sad that you're leaving, because, and not that, you know, you'll be wonderful, but you just, you just have such, like, a very collaborative way about you, and you're very solutions-focused, and you're not contentious, like, you are a wonderful person to work alongside, so thank you. Our presentations tonight were outstanding, and I think that it was quite timely to help us remember why exactly we have education and why we have public education, and sometimes that gets lost in the adults and the adultness of education, but we saw tonight the difference that we make in people's lives, and everyone is talking about the graduates, you know, to the parents and the caregivers and the educators that got those kids there, you know, congratulations to them, and as a mom who had a less-than-typical child, I know exactly what goes into getting a kid there, and I'm a pretty fierce advocate, but there was a handful of educators that indeed kept him alive, so to see that tonight in front of you is quite remarkable, it's quite a privilege, and Jo, I didn't speak on your presentation, but you're outstanding, and you, you bring, you tie it all together, and you demonstrate so beautifully the engagement and the commitment that the people in this district have, and that is such a beautiful, powerful story, and that's what we need to be focused on, because sometimes we lose sight of what we're doing and the privilege that we have when we do get to go out into the field and build houses for bugs and have people record it, and then we have that, so thank you to you and your tiny team for what you do, and I think that's all, enjoy your summer, and thanks for everything that everybody does.
So, I hope everybody has a wonderful summer, to all of our hard-working staff, our parents, our students, everyone in the district, I hope that you have a wonderful summer connecting with your family, and we're all looking forward to seeing you back here in September as we head into another exciting school year. So, thank you to everybody who stuck with us till almost 11 o'clock, I hope that you have a wonderful evening. So, now, we have question period. Question period is provided at board meetings for the public to ask questions for clarification. The board welcomes questions from the public and wants to ensure that those willing to ask questions can do so, so the questions need to be directed to the chair and not staff, they need to be related directly to the topic on the agenda, they need to be succinct, focused, and not be a statement, they may not be, may not be asked or related to personnel or directed to an individual trustee, and may not be asked if they are related to contract negotiations. Is there anybody who has any questions this evening? Do not see anybody, okay, so, on that note, we need a motion to adjourn at 10:47, Vice Chair Coburn's moving it, Trustee Wilson's seconding it, all those in favor, happy summer.